Welcome to our January 19th afternoon city council meeting. We're very pleased that you're here on behalf of your caring city council with Dan Albert, Alan Hoffa, Ed Smith, Tyler Williamson. I'm your mayor and it's honor for us to serve our city that we love so much and take care of with you. I'm going to turn it over to our very encouraging Nat or will it be Clementine who are going to just explain the rules for participation today?
I'll be explaining the rules for participation.
Okay. Very good.
All right. So as many of you already know, there are a few ways to participate in city council meetings. One is to join directly on Zoom Gov using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device. And the second method is to join in by calling into the meeting by telephone. The easiest way to join is through the Zoom app because there is no lack time. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, you'll use the link or the phone number that's listed on the agenda, which is also located if I search monterey.org. Since the meeting has already started, you'll find that agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, you could dial toll-free 833-568-8864 and enter the meeting ID, which is 1607729333, and if prompted to enter a participant ID, press press pound one more time. Detailed instructions on how to use Zoom is available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. And here's how you can make public comments. If you're using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand using the Zoom app by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you're dialed in by phone, please be sure to raise your hand by pressing star nine and then also dial star six to unmute yourself. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak. The mayor has designated a three-minute time limit for today's meeting with a countdown timer that will show on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. We do ask that you stay within your time limit so we don't have to cut you off. Today's meeting is also being streamed live at youtube.com/cityofmonterey. It has about a 10-second delay and then also on Comcast Channel 25, which has a 90-second delay. Which if you plan to make a comment, please join the meeting using Zoom on the app or by telephone and make sure you join in time to accommodate any delays that might occur. As always, we look forward to receiving public comment. Back to you, Mayor Roberson.
Okay, thank you. That that sounds complicated, but it really isn't. And a really great way to participate. I recommend that you go to the agenda and just join our Zoom meeting. I've done that with Parks and Rec Planning Commission and it's just a really good way to participate. Easy to raise your hand. And so that's a best way to probably do it. So our meeting's called to order and public comments. And these are, it's open mic time. You can even sing karaoke if you want. But these are comments about anything not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey. By law, we listen, we can give a real brief explanation or clarification. But the best thing to do is leave a contact and our really enthusiastic staff will get back to you. So with that, we'll open it up to general public comments, please.
We have a few people with their hands already raised and the first caller or person to join us is Rick Johnson. So hello, welcome, Rick. You can unmute yourself. There's a unmute button that should be there on your screen.
I just didn't know I was speaking.
And Rick, Rick Johnson, before you begin, this is Mayor Clyde. What a pleasure to see you downtown today and have a nice chat and on such a beautiful day. Always great to see you.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. I just wanted to give a really big shout out and thank you for everything that the city's been doing during these very, very difficult times. I think after talking to other business associations in other cities, we are by far the one that is the most dialed in to both the business and the residents. And I, I just want to sincerely thank all of you.
Great. Thank you, Rick. We appreciate you calling in. And I will go to the next caller and that's going to be Esther Malkin. Hi Esther, welcome.
Hi, everybody. So I just wanted to bring up a point that has come up a couple of times in the last few years, which is about the annual State of the City address that used to be presented to all the residents in the city and the last couple of years has been presented only to the host group of the Monterey County Property Owners Association. I don't understand and others don't as well, why there is an invitation only presentation of this the last few years that has been in the past, something that all residents could attend in person. And now especially during a pandemic, we should be able to hear that presentation either in a recording or live to the whole city and all residents, not just property owners that are part of this particular group. City staff obviously is very busy, as is the mayor. And if they were to do that presentation to every neighborhood association, which I think there is something like 14 of us or Rotary Clubs, Kiwanis Clubs and everybody else that might be interested in it, I would imagine that the bulk of your time would be taking up doing that instead of the other parts of of your jobs. So in the past, we have asked for either a recording or to be included in this. And the fact that we continue to be left out leaves us to question why this type of meeting would be, you know, specifically given to a particular type of association and how that presentation is potentially customized to what they should or shouldn't be interested in. I have particular question about that one because as you know, the majority of the residents and constituents of the city are renters. So that property manager, the property managers and property owners get to have this particular update on how our city is doing as a whole is particularly disturbing this year in a pandemic. Thanks.
Thanks Esther for your comments. And let's see if there are other callers. Doesn't look like anyone else has raised their hand for items not on today's agenda.
Okay, good. Well, as I mentioned in my introductory remarks, where we can't give elaborate explanations of things, but a quick clarification. Hans and I were invited by Matt Poet to give, I guess it was a State of the City. I just told stories about the good old days and Hans actually gave good information. And so we're invited, as Esther pointed out, and thank you Esther, to neighborhood associations, Kiwanis, Rotary, lots of different groups. And we're always happy to speak to them. So if anyone wants to set up a meeting, I will be there, Hans will be there. And I know our very articulate city council just loves to participate as well. So I encourage anyone who wants to set up a meeting with your neighborhood association, business association, include everybody that you want and we will be there. And if if I repeat a story or two, you'll forgive me, I'm sure. So let's go to consent items. Was there anybody council or public who wanted to pull or comment on any consent items, please? City council. Looks like Councilmember Ed wants to make a comment or pull something.
Yeah, number nine, I would like to pull it and then I'll have time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So we'll pull number nine for a brief presentation.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Beatty asked to pull number seven and number eight.
Okay, we will do that. And anyone else? Okay, that's in anyone, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items seven, eight, and nine. Second, second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes. Okay, item seven is to authorize the city manager to enter an agreement with the Monterey Bay Air Resources District. So we'll turn it over very quickly to our energetic city manager to give us a brief overview, then we'll ask anyone in the public to comment, please.
Mr. Mayor, adaptive signaling systems are something that you have heard multiple times in front of city council. And our city traffic engineer Andrea Rennie will present to you this specific grant award that we got from the Monterey Bay Air District. So with that, I punted directly over to Andrea and leave the public works director out of the equation.
Ah, but he misses his adjectives. We'll get you one later, Steve.
Oh yeah, there's a chance for him still, but today I'm more energetic than usual. So Andrea, please.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I just have a very quick presentation. So Clementine, it says not, it's disabled screen sharing. Sorry.
You should be able to now. Sorry about that, Andrea.
Thank you. Okay, so on a screen, I just have a quick snapshot on where we currently have adaptive systems. So we've completed all of Lighthouse Avenue, including David and Hawthorne, the Del Monte corridor, also in North Fremont. So in progress right now, we have Monras and Fremont corridors. And then in the future, after we complete Monras and Foam, we're going to move on to Pacific and Franklin and Pacific and Franklin are, that's the grant that we are receiving today. So in order to fund the project, we head to the next slide, we've had, we used about $800,000 of Measure X. We were able to receive about $4 million in grant funding that included AB2766 funds from the Monterey Bay Air District. Also included a regional surface transportation program. So they were all competitive grants. And we also received $300,000 from our neighborhood capital improvement program. So by doing most of the work in-house, by managing the insulation, the purchasing engineering services, we're able to save about 15 to 20% of the total project, which amounts to $700 to $1 million. So that stretches our funding and it stretches our Measure X funding also. By doing the adaptive system, we're also able to replace failing equipment, which increases our resiliency. And we use mostly grant funding, so there is no general fund used in order to replace all the failing equipment. As far as communication, all the communication for the adaptive signal system is through fiber optic communications. And I'm here if you have any questions.
All right. Any questions from our council? Okay, seeing none, let's go out to the public. And if Ms. Beatty is here, we'd love to hear from her and anyone else who'd like to comment, please.
We have no hands raised at this time. And just a reminder for our, it's like potentially one call in user, please dial star nine to raise your hand and then star six to unmute yourself. And we do have one caller. So let's see if they could unmute themselves by dialing star six.
Okay, good. Thank you, Nat.
Hi, this is Nina Beatty. I was, I've heard several presentations on the adaptive traffic program focusing on Del Monte and Lighthouse. But was surprised to see that this now proposes to put, put the system in place along Pacific. The, the, the presentations in the past have talked about high traffic areas and facilitating tourist ingress to various facilities, including the aquarium. But the new proposal is for intersections that don't get much, if any tourist traffic at all. This is a very expensive system for just these two areas of Pacific and Franklin of $400,000. I'm asking the council to remove the adaptive traffic lights on Pacific from Jefferson to Solidad. Because it's an expensive system, it should be used where it's needed. And it's unnecessary at these intersections and will cause a waste of not only taxpayer dollars, but resources and energy. I'm, one of the issues that's not discussed, I've seen the promos on the Monterey Channel for the system about how traffic is allowed to flow without needing to be stopped at different intersections. But this begs the question of the intersecting corridors where traffic is sitting and idling, waiting for sometimes interminable delays for long traffic lights for the main corridor to be continuing, continually flowing. So that's not discussed. In addition, the report, the agenda report talks about traditional signal programming, but it doesn't mention the sensors in the pavement that monitor traffic as well. If those sensors are not for triggering the signals, what are the sensors for? So I see lots of questions. It is disturbing for me to see Monterey installing the surveillance technology in the city, including around City Hall and in the neighborhoods. It gives the appearance that Monterey is not safe. And in addition, the main arteries in and out of the neighborhoods and the main streets of the city are now monitored or will be soon monitored by cameras. Again, this is, I'm, I grew up in Monterey and I'm not used to seeing signals or cameras at all the intersections. It's a new phenomenon that's very disturbing in terms of its implications. And again, it gives the appearance that Monterey is not a safe place to be. I can see the advantage possibly to this technology for the main traffic corridors, which are Lighthouse and Del Monte, but I do not see their function. I just see lots of expense. And as we know, these, these systems don't just have the initial installation. They have, they're, they constantly need to be upgraded, new software, new licenses and all that. So this will be an ongoing expense. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see if we have anyone else. And we do not have anyone else to comment on this item.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Beatty. We'll turn it back to Andrea. Andrea, a couple of questions were, one was why Franklin and Jefferson intersections? Then secondly, I think there's a misunderstanding about the surveillance cameras. They're really not. We've had that discussion before and in that they're not taking photos, et cetera, of individuals. There's no invasion of privacy. So if you could talk about those, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so as far as the cameras, they're not recording. We don't keep recorded footage from any of the intersections. The cameras, what they do is they have a detection zone, very similar to what the loops are on the ground. The advantage to the cameras is if we have construction or restriping, is you just draw another square on the camera software. You don't have to pay for to relocate the loops. So the cameras, the new video detection, it's actually, it saves us in the long run. And also we're able to look at the traffic that is coming towards that intersection, not the traffic that is already at the intersection. So one of the questions was also why Pacific and Franklin? One of the advantages of the adaptive system is it really reduces the stop and go traffic. And it's able by detection and by having a centralized software system, it is able to see the traffic that is coming. So not only does that benefit Franklin and Pacific, but it also benefits the side streets. So if you currently have an issue that you wait too long in the side streets, this would also take care of it. By eliminating stop and go traffic, what it also does is it reduces greenhouse gas emissions. And one of the things that we had calculated is by the time we're done with the adaptive system on all of our materials, we would have saved about 20 tons of particulate matter per year. And I believe another question was about the difference in the camera and the sensor in a pavement. So the cameras are much better at picking up not only the vehicles, but also bicycles. So this makes it so that all the detection in the city is also picking up the bicycles.
Okay, thank you. Excellent questions, great answers. Council, have any comments or are we ready to move on this? Councilmember Allen?
I'd like to move approval.
Second?
And if I can, yeah, if I can, I'd just like to really commend staff. This is the, this is the kind of work that makes Monterey such a great place to live, where we have, you know, a few years ago, the number one concern was traffic. And our staff has addressed that with this technology. Not only that, but they went out and got grants so that the vast majority of this money is, is not being paid by local residents. And then, did you say 20 million tons? Is that, did I catch that, Andrea?
I'm sorry, 20 tons.
20 tons, okay, 20 tons of, of gas being diverted. So I just think that's outstanding.
Thank you, Allen. All right, seeing no other comments, roll call, please.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Absolutely, yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes, for me as well. Okay, that carries five of them. Okay, it's my understanding Ms. Beatty wanted to talk about item number eight as well. And rather than make a presentation because it is in the agenda, let's just go straight to the public on that and see what kind of questions we can answer, please.
Okay, those who are interested in speaking on this topic, please dial star nine to raise your hand and then star six to unmute yourself. And we will have Ms. Beatty rejoin us. Hi.
Thank you. This is Nina Beatty again. Um, I wanted to give a recommendation that Gabriela Chavez be appointed to one of the two commissions that she applied for. She applied for museums and cultural arts and parks and recreation. She brings a needed voice of the community of residents, of people that are often neglected by the processes that go on in the city to these commissions and has an impressive background as well and understanding. And I was also concerned that the mayor selected again the Director of Operations of the very powerful Monterey County Business Council for the Architects Review Committee. The Business Council already has a very powerful influence in Monterey and the county. And I object to allowing its director to occupy more space and take up a scarce seat available on the Architecture Review Committee, even as more qualified applicants were passed over. So I really would like the council to revisit the selections for the Architecture Review Committee as well as for the other two committees that Gabriela Chavez applied for. And I hope that you'll give her a seat on, on those committees. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nina, for your comments. Our next caller is Esther Malkin and we'll go ahead and hear from Esther now.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to echo what was just said about Gabriela Chavez being given an appointment to one of the committees that she applied for, at least one. She ran for city council and has shown by doing that, that she is interested in becoming engaged in the process. And given that we do not have any women represented on the city council, I think it would be very good to have more women participate in the opportunities that are available. And she should be allowed, especially on the Parks and Rec, given the fact that our, our neighborhood that she lives in is adjacent to the largest park in the region, so in this area. So I believe that she should have been given more consideration rather than just been overlooked. Thanks. Thanks.
Thanks, Esther. Let's see, and no one else has raised their hand. And we'd like to speak on this item. So we're back to Mayor Roberson.
Okay, since I'm, I'm the one who's actually made these recommendations to you, allow me very briefly to explain the process that I went through. First of all, I looked at all the applications and invited people to call me on my personal phone. And so I was able to speak to everyone, except one person never did call me back. And then what I've asked the city clerk to do, we sent out three to four reminders to call. And I did have a very nice discussion with Gabriela, whose father is from Peru. And interestingly enough, my son-in-law is from Peru. And so when we can all get together, we're going to share some Peruvian food together with families. So I wanted to assure everyone that I definitely did have an opportunity to talk to everyone extensively. And in my discussions with Ms. Chavez, she realized that she actually missed the deadline. And she was totally understanding. At that point, I would have had to eliminate one of the recommendations. And I assured her and I want to assure the public that I was extraordinarily impressed with her abilities and look forward to her being on a border commission very soon. Forty-two people applied for various positions. And assuming that incumbents may be reappointed, there were about three to four open seats. If you take a look at my recommendations, you will see that we have a great deal of women represented. That's very important to me. We also are looking for people of different ethnic groups. And I'm very pleased that the recommendation includes that, too. And so just to briefly summarize, these are my recommendations. I respect the council. If they want to do something differently, I told you that when we decided to go to this format. And, but I, I did very carefully speak to everyone. Unfortunately, Ms. Chavez did miss the deadline. Even though we did have three or four reminders, that's not a criticism. It's simply somewhere along the line, I had to make recommendations. After 42 applicants, all of whom were wonderful. And as I've told people a number of times, please apply again. We're going to get you on a border commission. And we're going to do it sooner than later. So just stay tuned in, watch the meetings, attend the meetings, and we definitely will get you on a border commission. So I think you'll find that women are extraordinarily represented. I was very pleased to have some other recommendations. Ms. Payam had applied for ARC last time. He didn't get an opportunity to be appointed, but this time I was very pleased that he could join us. And so that was my rationale. And I want to assure the public that I definitely considered everyone. And Gabriela would have been one of my choices had she met the deadline. So any questions or we can move on, whatever you want to do, council?
Mayor, if, if I may, I, I just kind of want to support your, your recommendations. And I'll say two things. One, I've had a conversation with Gabriela and I've given her some, some, some advice about how to best prepare herself for being able to get a recommendation to be on a board commissioner committee. So we've had a conversation and she has an idea of what she needs to do. And when I look at your list of recommendations, Mayor, I believe actually the majority of them are women. So I, I just kind of wanted to support that. And with that, I'll make a recommendation or a motion to approve your recommendations.
Thank you, Tyler.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Just a quick comment, Mayor?
Yes, please, Councilmember Ed.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the time and effort it takes for you to carefully go through the interviews and meet a lot of new folks and reconnect with some of the folks that have been serving so well. I just want to say that those that are on all of these commissions serve the community so well. They give up of their time, their effort. There's a lot of material to, to study. And in many cases, it's even more of an agenda than we have and more material than we might have. So there's some heavy lifting here. I do want to make a comment back to an individual that serves on the Architectural Review Commission. The person is not an executive director of the location where she works, but she is a staff member. And the criteria for me would always be if there's no obvious conflict of interest, that, you know, if a person is well-qualified and interested and they're a resident, why would we ever deny their participation? And so I think in all transparency, I just wanted to say that we do want to encourage people that are in all kinds of work, all kinds of walks of life. And we should not automatically eliminate somebody just because of the, the nature of their employment. It doesn't automatically mean that there's a conflict. I think the criteria for me would be somebody who is working and volunteering already and they've been doing an outstanding job. Why would we remove someone just to make a spot for somebody newer? So I think in, in all fairness, we have to look at the conduct and performance of those that are on the positions now. And that's another criteria I'm sure you considered. And you asked them to continue because their service has been exceptional. So I just wanted to say that we appreciate all those that are serving these committees and commissions, and we couldn't do this work without them.
Thank you, Councilmember Ed. Other comments? Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, I, I wanted to say, first of all, to everyone who applied, thank you. A lot of cities don't have this problem. They're begging people to serve on these kinds of commissions. We have a lot of boards and commissions and we have, we have a lot of people who are willing to serve. So that's a great problem to have. And, you know, the applicants all looked great. I, I support the recommendation. I did at first, when I read it, I was a little surprised not to see Gabriela Chavez's name move forward because I think she would be outstanding. But I appreciate your explanation and it makes sense. So thank you for your work in recommending these folks. And thank you to all of the boards and commissioners.
Thank you, Allen. It, it was, it was a process that, it clementine, it went on for months. And we're finally there. I'll, I'll tell you two quick anecdotes. One of the applicants, and I look very much forward to her being on a board of commission soon, lives in Old Town. And I taught her husband at Bayview School about years ago. And then another applicant was, her spouse was another Bayview student that I had taught. And that's what I love about our small town. And again, Allen, you summarized it really well. So those of you who didn't get appointed this time, we'll get you on. Just, just be patient. We're going, we want you. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes, thank you. And it carries five oh. So number nine, Councilmember Ed wanted to talk about the letter of, from the city council supporting AB 15 at the state level. So energetic Hans, will you explain what that is? And we'll turn it right over to Ed when you're done.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've asked Nat to, to provide a brief summary about the proposed legislation and lead us into a conversation and discussion with Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Hans. And I will keep this brief. Just a little bit of background on this topic. As many of you know, the COVID-19 Tenant Relief Act of 2020 provides eviction protections for those who are experiencing financial distress for unpaid rent. That's the current state law, the eviction moratorium that started March 1st and goes through the end of this month, January 31st. During the December 1st city council meeting, some of the council members suggested a local eviction moratorium ordinance, only if the state does not extend the moratorium. We, we found out there is a current bill being considered at the state assembly introduced by Assemblymember Chu out of San Francisco. It's called AB 16, which is the Tenant Stabilization Act. And it would extend the tenant eviction moratorium beyond the current date of January 31st and go through the end of this calendar year. And among other things, it would extend the definition of COVID-19 rental debt and provide additional protections to tenants that include the supporting documentation, late fees, utility service interruptions, as well as retaliation. Current status of the bill, AB 15, it was introduced on December 7th. And with this new session, it has been referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development on January 11th. I spoke with a member of Assemblymember Chu's staff this afternoon, and she told me that there is no hearing date set, but they are very hopeful that it will be heard soon at the Committee on Housing and Community Development and potentially voted on by the full assembly next week. It may be adopted before January 31st. We, we did see that Governor Newsom has expressed publicly his support for extending the COVID-19 eviction moratorium and would likely sign a bill if it is brought to him for signature. At this time, staff recommends and asks the council to consider authorizing the mayor to sign a letter on behalf of the Monterey City Council supporting AB 15. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Good, good. Thanks for that summary. Councilmember Ed, please.
Yeah, I, I might have a few questions in terms of the, the current bill as it's written. But Nat, do you know if it's currently extending out the exemption from, and I'll call, I'll call it the meat and potatoes of the bill, which is rental debt collection for the purpose of retaliating against a leasing that can't pay the, the rents owed or the debt that's owed from that period of time. But the bill as it's written says to extend this as a prohibition until January 1 of 2022. Is that currently the letter of AB 15?
AB 15, that's, that's correct. It would go through the end of the calendar year. So January 1, 2022, or December 31st, 2021 is what, what I read. But that's, that's correct.
Yeah, so from, from this point forward, we're talking about 11 and a half months extension.
Exactly.
Okay. And there's some reference into extending the law as far out as 2026. So I, I just, I know when you start to read assembly bill or senate bill, the text, it has not yet gone to committee. So as I scanned through it a second time today, I think I, I marked a spot. But Nat, are you aware of the language that, that says an action to recover COVID rental debt as defined in the new section shall not be commenced before January 1, 2022? And that's the current proposal. But then I also saw on here some conflicting language that talked about as far out as 2026 that the law would stand and could not be repealed until then. So I guess, I guess I need to have a little clarification about how long does this moratorium actually last?
The, the moratorium will last through the end of the calendar year, so to December 31st, 2021. I'm not sure exactly why, but they, there's a language that states that existing law repeals the act on a certain day and that extends out beyond the, the period of, of the actual bill, which only covers this calendar year. So under current law, for example, the, the bill that was passed by and signed into law, the, the one that started in, in March, that bill specifically is scheduled to be repealed on February 1st of 2025. So the, the nuance there, I don't know if anyone else, whether it's Hans or Chrissy or someone has more, more information on that. But my understanding is it just, it's, they're, for some, whatever reason, they've, they've listed a repeal date, but it still doesn't mean that, that the tenant protections would go all the way to 2025 or 2026 in this case.
The repeal date of this legislation is extended, extends the previous act that it was, that is being used to replace it by another year to 2026. And I, I understand also that it, there's something with small claims court that I think the small claims court are responsible also for dealing with claims under this act has been also extended by another year till sometime 2026.
Okay, so that, that makes sense to me now. The concern I have with supporting it, and I know we have, the mayor wrote a letter in support. It's just gone to committee. So in its current form, I can't really support AB 15 because of the long period of time that it extends. It extends it so far out, there is another group there that we have to be concerned with. And I'm hearing from folks that are having a hard time dealing with their mortgages because they have non-paying occupied. And certainly there's a lot of pain and suffering on all parts. But to extend this out for another 11 and a half months where a property owner with a mortgage or without, and they depend on the units, has income, puts them in peril. And so I think it's just too far of an extension. And I look forward to maybe the committee's going to come back and it's going to be less than January 1, 2022. But extending it that far, I can't support it.
Thank you, Councilmember Ed. Other discussion? Councilmember Dan?
So again, the way I see this is that it, the people it's supposed to help are people that are being affected by the COVID-19 pandemic, which means that they have to show and prove that they are being impacted by COVID-19 pandemic. If in the next six, seven, eight months, vaccines come on, on board and we start to see a decline, a huge decline in the pandemic, then people will not be affected by the pandemic. So if this bill is passed, even if it's passed and it extends to 2026, there, there won't be a, a lot of people that have been affected or if any by the pandemic. So essentially, even though the bill will go to 26, the, the people that have been evicted or trying to be evicted, I don't think that they're, they could prove that it's because of the pandemic. So for me, I, I'm more concerned with the next four months and four or five months or even six months. So again, if the pandemic ceases in a year, then the bill really doesn't mean much because nobody's being affected. So for me, I can support only because I think that something needs to be done right now. If that makes sense, I think it does.
Yes, Councilmember, Councilmember Allen?
Just, just a reminder, we haven't gone to the public yet and council is discussing the merits.
Thank you very much. We should be at the questions. Thank you. So let's go public, then we'll bring it down.
And we do have, we do have one member of the public who's raised their hand so far. And that's Esther Malkin. Welcome back, Esther.
Hello again. So thank you to Councilmember Dan for mentioning what he just brought up. And I will point out that the same way that renters who have to show proof that they qualify for the assistance program, that it is COVID-related that they have to do so. If there are landlords and property owners that are having a true hardship, they should also have to show proof that they are having this hardship if they want to be able to push forward on an eviction and put people out on the streets. I mean, unless somebody has some sort of proof that they have somewhere else to go, I don't think that renters should have to be the only ones to, to have to provide proof of hardship. By this, by the second, another, another token I'll bring up is that this council decided that we didn't, or some of this council, decided that there, there was no need to have a, a study session agendized. And this is only the beginning of, of what actually needs to be discussed by this council for how to move forward on all the renter issues that are going to be ahead of you for the next couple of months. And not having a dedicated study session for it is, is extremely short-sighted on such a complicated issue that it'll eventually spill over to... that it'll eventually spill over to homelessness on our streets affecting the tourist traffic in the area and other aspects of council business. So I will reinforce the suggestion that Councilmember Tyler Williamson made that apparently many of you took as an attack by just the suggestion of having this study session being brought up as a possibility of taking place. And lastly, I just want to mention that the talk nationally right now with the new stimulus package is to revisit how the funds are going to be attributed and that the people who have the most need be given first crack at it through a weighted lottery versus, through a weighted application process versus the first comes first served. Because what has been found is that the people who need it the most are actually getting it the least because they don't have access or aren't notified about the programs when they're out there. So that is something I think is important to consider and treat almost the same as the way small business loans were put out there to smaller businesses and a lot of them didn't qualify. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. There are no other commenters on agenda number nine.
Okay, good. Thank you. Back to the council. What's your pleasure? Councilmember Allen, please.
So I think we need this, and ideally, we need it statewide rather than kind of some here, some there. So I think supporting this makes sense. But I am cognizant that a year is a long time and a lot of things can change in a year. And Dan pointed out, one of them that we certainly hope changes is that the vaccine will change things, but we don't know. And I, but I'm just wondering if Ed would be more comfortable if we added a sentence that said something, and I don't, something to the effect of, you know, we support this legislation, but would prefer the legislature approved, you know, a six-month extension and then reconsidered whether a second extension is needed in six months. In other words, I certainly think we're going to need something for the next six months at a minimum. Whether we need it for a whole year, I don't know, but I don't know if it's possible, if you'd be more comfortable with language like that, Ed, or if it's just something you really don't feel comfortable with at all.
Well, and I think that if you bring up a point that I think is valid is to convey our thinking to the Assembly as it goes into committee, which I'm sure they're going to be hearing from a lot of other folks throughout the state. I do think we need to have rental relief. I think that they need, the tenants need to be guarded. And in concept, I'm there and I have no disagreement with the intent of this. It's just the extension for another 11 and a half months. Let's say we do recover and folks get their jobs back. This bill refers back to March 2020 to now that you're impacted. So people are able to use that as evidence all the way through till January of 2022, why they can't bring their rents current or why they can't pay the back due. So it just is too long of an extension. So I think you're right. I think, Alan, if we amended it to say our preference would be a six-month extension and reevaluate it at that time as the economy recovers.
What are the rest, do you think about that?
I think that's okay, right? But I think it's, I think there's an important distinction that I think just needs to be clear with staff about how we're drafting it. So it's that we're supporting the legislation, though we would prefer that it would be six months and be reconsidered at that time.
Okay, that's clear. Anyone else? Dan?
No, that works.
Okay. Well, does someone want to make an emotion to that effect?
I move to approve.
And I will second that. And with staff being directed to add language to the effect that was just stated.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, just two quick points. One is I don't expect us to be back to the new normal until 2022. If you look at the problems that we're having right now distributing the vaccine, and even if someone is vaccinated, they can still catch COVID, they can still give it to somebody. And so I have my fingers crossed that we'll be looking at six months. And then secondly, I think the state legislature is going to, even if they did six months, if the need were there, they would extend it. There's no question in my mind. So I think we're good.
Yeah, and I realize that the Assembly Bill and the Senate, they're going to do what they choose to, and they're not going to listen to me, but I just want to make the distinction that it's easy for an emergency legislation to occur to respond to current data rather than getting so far out and make blanket legislation with so many unknowns and it hasn't even gone to committee yet. So if this was coming after committee and we clearly knew what the final bill was, I would be more comfortable saying I can live with the final bill. But when things go into committee, too many things can happen. So I just think we need to get our voice out that's delivering a message to the Assembly as they work through getting this right. So I know relief in some form is appropriate. I just would rather it be scaled.
All right, well, that's, I think, the essence of the motion captures that. And we had a motion and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes, that passes 5-0. And let's go on to our public appearance item. And that has to do with a fire reserve truck. I was surprised when I saw this on the agenda just as an introduction because it hasn't been the habit of the city council to get into the operation of our city staff, public safety or anything else. And so we'll get an explanation why this is in front of us in the first place and then take a look at the options. Because to my mind, it's pretty clear that this isn't necessarily in the purview of the city council. It should be in the purview of our professional staff, which is our city manager, our fire chief, as well as our incredible Monterey Fire Department. So that's why I just wanted to introduce this, is why is this even on our agenda? Because I don't think I want to tell the fire department how to operate anymore than I wanted them to tell me how to teach fifth grade. So Hans, with that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the introduction. As you found out when you read the agenda report, this item is in front of you because eight years and four months ago, or five months ago or so, another city council made some findings that required us to look at two of those trucks, having those in our fleet and replacing them. So with that, I felt it was necessary to honor the decision that and the guidance that the council gave in August 2012 and bring this topic forward to you for your consideration. And without further ado, here's our fire chief, Pan Holzer.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council, as well as the members of the public. I'm hopefully going to get the screen share business right. Is that working now?
Yep, it's working.
Excellent. Okay. I've gotten good at it on the Google Meet thing, and this is my first venture in the Zoom world. So yes, we're here to talk about the reserve truck. And it's based on, as the city manager just shared, based on a decision that was made a number of years ago by the council when a second truck was added to the fleet and it appeared that that was a policy decision of the council and we didn't want to make a new decision or a different decision without letting the council weigh in on it. So what we're looking for today is direction to staff as to whether to sell, keep, or keep in storage or put the reserve truck back in service. And then optionally, we can consider purchasing a new truck. Want to talk a little bit about the truck and its purpose and how it fits into our deployment model. As is common in the fire service, the city Monterey Fire Department is deployed in forms of companies where we deploy people, groups of three on a vehicle. And every one of our fire stations that we operate, including those in our partner cities, has an engine company in service with three people on it. An engine company responds to all the calls in that jurisdiction, but its purpose, especially the scene of a fire, is predominantly for making interior access to the building and and extinguishing the fire. Everybody at the scene of the fires is on task to perform rescue. But truck companies are a unique company, and we have one company in service here at the downtown fire station as a truck company. And they are used, truck companies are specialized equipment with specialized training to perform more complex rescue situations, to be able to access the roofs of buildings to perform what we call vertical ventilation to get the smoke and gases out of a building and also to perform search and rescue and several other things. They are also used, like I said, in specialized rescue. So if we have more complex rescues, extrications out of vehicles, things like that, they carry all the tools and those people have specialized training in those areas to do those things. The truck also serves as the second responding unit out of our busy station downtown to cover medical calls and other calls when the engine is busy on another call. So it's kind of a very, might say, jack-of-all-trades kind of company, but has some very specialized tools and training. Some of the reasons why we have specifically the type of vehicle, it's equipped with an aerial ladder. Ours happens to be a 100-foot aerial ladder. And a lot of people talk about, well, that's because we have the large hotel downtown, the Marriott. And actually, that's really not an ideal location to use a tall ladder because it still would only, it would not get to the roof of that building. The long ladder has a lot of reasons that we use, and I have some pictures in a little bit here that kind of demonstrates some of these things. But to reach the roof of buildings with a setback or on an uphill slope, so if we're going to a home up on the hills here and the house is on the uphill side of the street, we can still, you know, with the extra slope, we can still reach the roof of the building and make access that way. We also have opportunity to use the truck, the ladder in our rescue situations. We use it for a high point anchor, which is moving, attach a rope system to it and be able to remove somebody either that's in a stretcher from the roof of a building or an elevated area, or we also use it for pulling somebody out of a depressed area off of the beach along the coast, things like that. And then in many coastal rescues, we respond, and we also use it as an elevated observation point. So we can put somebody up 100 feet above the ground level so you can get a much better view of finding victims in the ocean, et cetera. And it's certainly proven its worth in those situations. If we have a larger fire and the building becomes untenable for firefighters to enter because of collapse, either already having happened or imminent, it's sometimes difficult to get the water streams into the deep reaches of the building and having an elevator water stream for reach and penetration is really important. And then, as I mentioned, there's a lot of tools, a varied collection of tools that we need to use for the services that we provide. And the truck has an incredible story. It's a very large toolbox that can carry all those tools. And if we wanted to put those, we'd have to distribute on several different vehicles. And then it would be, okay, what kind of a call are we going on? Which vehicle do we take? So it's a lot easier just to keep all the tools together on one vehicle and make that deployment piece very easy. And then the last thing that we use it for is on vehicle accidents, especially on the freeway or on major arteries, we use it to block, when it responds, besides bringing the tools for extrication and so forth, we use it also to block traffic for firefighter safety and for the safety of the victims at the scene of the accident. Here you can see some examples of, even though these buildings aren't particularly tall, we couldn't get to the roofs of those buildings without that kind of a reach. You see almost, in both cases, almost 100%, all 100 feet of the ladder are extended to be able to reach the roofs of those buildings, and we are parked as close as we can to them. Here you see examples of the high point rescue system. One is pulling a stretcher off of the top of a parking garage. So from an elevated area, the other is reaching over the side and down the slope to get a victim up off of the beach in a simple and safe maneuver. And then the last picture on the bottom right was actually taken just, I believe it was a weekend, a week ago, a little over a week ago, when we had five people that needed this almost simultaneous rescue in the ocean, and it was hard to keep track of who's where and whatnot, and that sure benefited us to have that high point to observe from. I mentioned the elevated water streams, and here you see both taken at the same fire. These are pictures of where the building had already seen some collapse. You can see that on the picture on the right, the walls are falling. Those are situations where it's not safe to put a firefighter in, yet they're fairly large buildings. And the only way to get a water stream in deep into the building is to have that elevated stream capability. And here you see the, just one side of the toolbox open and all the variety of different tools that we carry in order to perform all these functions that the truck is designed to perform. A little bit about history of truck companies in service in the city of Monterey and the Monterey Fire Department. Before we had, before we consolidated and we operated only within the city and out of three fire stations, we had a single truck in service here at the downtown station, and we did not have a reserve truck in the fleet. There was a truck in, at the Pacific Grove Fire Station that was staffed as well as one in Seaside and Pebble Beach. So when ours was out of service, for whatever reason, we could rely on on our partner, on our neighboring agencies to provide that. When we consolidated with Pacific Grove, we lost the primary one that was served as our backup because in Pacific Grove, we now only staff the engine company as opposed to staffing two companies as was done prior to the consolidation. But we did use their truck as part of the fleet, and it was used actually quite frequently as the reserve truck in Monterey. But it was old, tired, and did not function very well. So it was not, did not perform well as a reserve truck for us. In 2012, in August of 2012, the Monterey Council authorized the purchase of a reserve truck in order that we had a more reliable fleet. In that action, we were authorized to purchase a used truck, a 1998 American Le France from the city of Santa Clara. And that's part of the key thing is that that truck is now in excess of 20 years old and getting near the end of its lifespan. And in that council agenda item, it also included the intention of a replacement plan that every 15 years, we purchase a new truck. And with that purchase, we place the new truck in frontline service, take the existing frontline service truck, place it in reserve status, and then surplus the truck that had been the reserve truck. If we were to continue on that plan, we would be looking at purchasing a new truck in 2023 because our frontline truck is a 2008, so 15 years later would put it at 2023 where we would move it into reserve status. We do know that we're keeping the that the timeframe between what is currently our reserve truck and the new truck is less than 15 years, but at some point, we have to get on that cycle. We still have trucks available via mutual aid from Seaside and Pebble Beach, although that has proven to be less than ideal. As a matter of fact, there's been plenty of times where they have actually asked us to be their truck company because their trucks have been out of service. So it's not a reliable option for us to have a backup truck. And so why this is even becoming part of the discussion is we've had a lot of challenges with our current trucks. Unfortunately, both of them were purchased based, our frontline truck was purchased based on specifications from the city of Los Angeles and their fleet that they use in the predominantly flat downtown part of Los Angeles. And the city of Santa Clara is also a very flat city, and so they purchased a truck that was well-suited for operating on a flat environment. As you know, almost any direction we go out of our fire station here downtown, we're going to be going uphill or downhill fairly quickly. And so the trucks that we have purchased are equipped with additionally a water tank and a pump, which makes them very heavy. And they were not really designed to carry that weight on the hills, and we've had significant downtime because of issues that we've had with axle problems. And that's directly related due to the weight. Certainly, as we move forward, when we do go out to purchase a new truck, we're going to eliminate the tank and the pump on them because that would save a lot of weight. And also, the new trucks come with the more modern engineered ladders that are much lighter weight. So we will be able to get a vehicle that's a lot better suited for our particular area. We've experienced significant downtimes in repair costs because of these situations. In the agenda report and on these charts, if they're at all legible on your computer screens, see over a three-year average of fiscal years 18, 19, and 20, we've been spending somewhere between $50,000 and $60,000 in operations and maintenance on each of the trucks. So that's kind of on the high end of what we should be spending on operations and maintenance. So that's kind of on the high end of what we should be spending on operations and maintenance costs for a vehicle. An engine is more in the $20,000 to $30,000 range is what we experience. And additionally, one of the big challenges is that we've, because of all the downtime, they've been out of service. And during those same fiscal years, the out-of-service time is about one-third of the year. So for four months out of the year, they are up at the shop rather than down at the fire station. And so not having a reserve truck would mean that we would have a truck out of service for an extended period of time. With the reserve truck, it's fortunately worked out that we've had very few days over those three fiscal years where we did not have a truck in service using either the frontline one or the reserve one. Then in May, we made the decision to try and save some of these operations and maintenance costs. We put the reserve truck on, basically out of options, out of availability to be used. It's essentially mothballed is what we've been calling it. It's sitting at a fire station and it's not being used. And so we've had, since then, a couple of these numbers are a little bit updated. We've had about, we're more on track to be at about $40,000 in maintenance costs on the frontline truck and virtually no maintenance costs, operations, maintenance costs on the reserve truck. I think its fuel tank was filled up once. And so there's a few hundred dollars charge related to that during the fiscal year. But other than that, so fortunately, we've had a much lower cost in trying to keep the truck in service this year. And we've also experienced a little bit less downtime, actually significantly less downtime. I want to say we're probably under, under targeting to be under 25 days for the whole fiscal year, now that we're about halfway through the year. So what we're looking is for thoughts and direction from the city council. Some of the options that are considered would be to leave the reserve truck in storage, basically leave it mothballed and that would do nothing. That has no fiscal impact. It would create an increased risk of us having times when there's no truck company available in service in our system. Another option would be just to put the reserve truck back in service. It certainly would expose us to increased operations and maintenance costs because if the vehicle is being used, then it will cost us use. It'll burn fuel and certainly there's going to be repair and maintenance costs as well on it. Another option would be to sell the reserve truck to get it completely out of the fleet. We certainly would save the maintenance costs on it and we would see probably about a one-time revenue of probably in the neighborhood of $20,000 from the proceeds of the sale. We could accelerate the replacement cycle and start the process of purchasing a new truck now rather than waiting until 2023. A new truck will cost us in the neighborhood of $1.2 million. And if we use the same funding mechanism that we used for our recent engine purchase, it works out to about $150,000 a year payments on that. And then as you are aware, we've recently initiated, we're actually still in the process of completing the contract with our vendor to complete a standards of cover study. And we could actually put this into that study because one of the things they will look at is the fleet and our deployment strategy. And they could add in, doing an analysis of whether or not it makes sense for us to have a reserve truck and what the actual impacts could be based on that. So those are kind of some of the options on the table. Certainly be open to any other thoughts. And so I send it back to you for questions and discussion.
Thank you, Gaudens. I appreciate that. Two questions. Number one is, if you sell one of these old fire engines for $20,000, where do they end up? Does somebody convert them to an RV or what?
Sometimes they go to collectors and sometimes they go to a small department that doesn't have the ability to purchase something frontline. And they might have volunteers that are mechanics that are willing to spend a lot of volunteer time in maintaining them. But that's why there's also not a whole lot of residual value in an old fire apparatus because there really isn't a huge market for that.
Right. Well, if you figure a new one costs 1.2 million and by the time you sell it, it's $20,000. Now, I've heard of depreciation, but that is incredible. Okay, the second thing is, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but this council, this city values public safety. That's one of our highest priorities. What do you need from us?
Well, my professional opinion, of course, is that we should put the reserve truck back in service as that way we know we have the reliability of having the vehicle available and the company available, staffed and deployed with the tools they need to perform the myriad of types of calls that we get. And you know, we don't get a lot of fires, but we do see a lot of other unique situations in rescues. And we would like to have that, the availability of all the tools and equipment that we need. You know, it's one thing when you get good people and we have really, really great people. But the other thing is making sure that they have the tools that they need.
If the council went with option five, which is basically to refer it back to our professional staff, the people who know, who are doing the work, is what are the positives and negatives to that?
Is that, option five, is that to postpone the decision until the standards of cover or is that?
Yes, exactly.
Well, if we postpone the decision and take no additional action, then we would leave the reserve truck in storage and would not have it available to deploy in the frontline fleet. And the standards of cover study should be done by summer. We're anticipating it to be completed in June. And so we would then have more information on maybe being able to specifically say, here's what the impacts would be as far as our deployment model and changing our deployment model by taking that out of service. And what might be the impact on outcomes as well?
Yes, would it give you maximum flexibility if we did number two and five, which basically allows you to keep your reserve truck in service, but on the other hand, gives you time to evaluate if that's the right way to go? Would that hybrid give you maximum flexibility and safety?
That it would, yes. Because then we would be back to knowing that we have the fleet, the reliable fleet available and the ability then to do a more in-depth analysis to make sure that we're moving forward in the right direction.
Okay, thank you. Council questions before we go to the public?
No questions. I want to hear from the public first.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Brad. Let's, Councilmember Dan.
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. So my question is, if our department went with only one truck and relied on services from other cities, would the response time be less? And can we do, can we work in our department with only one truck?
And that question would be in part something that we would answer through the standards of cover study. But in my professional experience, the distribution of truck companies is probably appropriate in our region with the fact that the Pebble Beach kind of covers the whole south part of Carmel and the mouth of the Carmel Valley areas and all of that. And then there's basically two trucks available here on the peninsula to cover the large cities. So without being able to do a complete analysis of the call volume on the entire peninsula and the impacts and needs of a truck, just my gut tells me that we probably have the right deployment by having two trucks in service on the peninsula, in the peninsula area, plus the one that kind of covers the south end of the peninsula with, from Pebble Beach. And then having a reserve available guarantees that that's the level of service we can provide on a continuous basis.
All right, thank you.
You're muted, Mayor, but if I can go ahead and jump in.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyler. Yeah, what's your thoughts?
No, so I'm assuming this is something that the standards of cover study would entail, but is there an assumption that there is an increase in response time? Or is it just specific types of responses that we're looking at with the reserve truck?
With with the not having a reserve truck on those days when our frontline truck is out of service, we would see an increase in response time based on the need for us to request it from one of our neighboring agencies for the truck company. It's not going to change the response time of the initial arriving crews because we'll have an engine company in service that will be responding to the incident. So it's, for a lot of times we talk about response time and there's really a couple of different ways that we should need to look at that. One is the arrival of the initial arriving personnel and how quickly they can begin to take action for responses to fires and large emergencies. We're talking about, we talk about the response time of an effective firefighting force. And as we know, we need more than just the three people to manage this incident. How long does it take us to deploy the entire number, the full number of people we need in the right, with the right tools to manage the incident? And so certainly we would see a little bit of a drop off in our response time capability for the effective firefighting force.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. And I guess basically it would have to do with how we would pay for the use of the reserve truck, the $20,000. Is that something, Chief, that you think you would be able to cover through the existing department budget? Or is that something where we would be having to look at the emergency reserve fund?
At the beginning of the year, I would have said that you would probably be looking at new money because as I said, this year we've had actually considerably lower costs. We've just been, not experienced the same problem rate with the frontline truck that we've spent much less, we're only at about $20,000 so far for the year. So between the two trucks, we may still come in with what we anticipated in the budget for just the one.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may say something as well?
Yes, please.
Yeah, you asked the fire chief if he prefers a hybrid of options. I want to throw in an option number six that I actually prefer. We are in the situation because the city council in 2012 felt that those discussions about what type of equipment we have to use in our operations should be also in a way recommended or set by city council. When I look at the overall equipment needs for the fire department, there are other equipment needs we have to tackle over the next few years. And I feel that option number six is actually another option that council can refer this back to the city manager and the fire chief and their division chiefs, as well as the firefighters to figure out what is the right equipment for that. It's very clear that we need some sort of a ladder truck in our fleet and it's very clear that backup makes sense. But I think the details of what we do, when and where, and what we have to replace over the next few years should be part of a budget or a proposal that is brought back from the operators for funding requests to you, the city council. At that time, the city council, of course, has the ultimate say of what you like to fund or not. But I just wanted to basically say the 2012 decision was made in the best intent, but it kind of blocks us yet to get into a good discussion with our operators because the council direction was to always have a reserve engine. So there are other equipment needs that this fire department still has and we need to weigh that carefully over the next couple of years. And of course, the standards of coverage study will provide us with a lot of good information. And at one time, all this information will come back with funding requests or suggestions also to the city council.
Thank you for that, Hans. Let's go to the public, please, not Nat.
Yes, we have a few people who have their hands raised. And the first one is Brittany Reed. And Brittany, if you could please unmute. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Wonderful. I really appreciate you taking the time. I am a local business owner in downtown Monterey. I own a restaurant and a retail location. And I would like to voice my favor of keeping the Monterey Fire Department Reserve Ladder Truck in service, at least until there is a plan in place to purchase a new truck. As a business owner who's invested both in my business and my retail location, the heart of downtown Monterey, it's unsettling to know that it's even being considered to limit the equipment available to emergency services. I happen to have my retail location in one of the businesses that burned down in 2007, that that ladder truck was integral to keeping it under control. So it would mean the world to me if the city upheld their responsibility to continuously provide the equipment that they need to keep the community safe. I know the council is keeping this a priority. I know that you are absolutely under a budgetary crisis at the moment. We all are. This year has been extremely difficult for all of us. And the city council members value our first responders just as much as I do, especially after the pandemic and the wildfires that deeply affected all of our homes. And I just hope that you will take great care in making any decision that will affect our ability to serve the residences and the businesses moving forward. Thank you.
Ms. Reed, onto our next caller is Patrick Moore. And if you could unmute yourself, welcome, Pat.
Great. Good afternoon. My name is Pat Moore and I'm the union president for the Monterey Firefighters Association. Thank you for your time this afternoon. I know you've been given some direction, you're trying to give us some direction on what we need to do with our reserve ladder truck. I know there's going to be a need to replace the truck no matter what in the future and that's going to be a difficult decision. We understand the financial issues that are facing the city, you know, as evidenced by our concessions we gave back at the beginning of the pandemic. So we understand. But let's talk a little bit about if we got rid of or sold the ladder truck. If we made a decision to replace it in two years, once you order the truck, it takes approximately two years to put that in service. You know, by the time they build it, we equip it and then train on it, it takes about two years to put it in service. So that's four years from now that we see a new truck. And if our truck's out of service conservatively 25% of the time, that's one year out of the next four that we would not have a truck to provide service to our community. So what are our options? You know, we can put everyone on another vehicle, our truck company on another vehicle, which has limited capabilities and rely on our neighbors. And our neighbors are great partners, Seaside and Cal Fire, but they have the same issues we do. You know, their trucks aren't always available, they respond to calls, they're busy. They may not be able to respond to our citizens. So supplying our own equipment with our own people is obviously the most efficient and the best way to provide service to our citizens. Another thing that you are all aware of is we've had quite a bit of turnover in the past few years for the department. And we use that reserve truck to train our new people as to not put wear and tear on our first-out truck. So it's a very specialized piece of equipment, it takes a lot of training to operate. And the last thing to consider is the standards of coverage study. You know, we're going to have this study done and it doesn't seem appropriate to make any type of decision before we even see what that report has to offer. Just like any other profession, we are trained to use the tools and equipment that were provided. It can be very frustrating if we don't have those tools and equipment on emergency scenes and sometimes even dire in our profession. So all we're asking for is just to have the tools provided to us so we can provide the best level of service to our community and use our skills to the best of our ability. So, you know, for us, I think the best option for us would be to keep the reserve truck, allow us the opportunities to put it in service so we can provide a truck company to the community 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Captain Moore. And our next caller is Chris Brogan. Hi, Chris.
Hello, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members and members of the public. My name's Chris Brogan. I am a division chief for C-Shift in the Fire Department. I apologize, some of this might be a repeat of what you've heard, but I'm calling in support of maintaining the reserve truck. It is important to realize that having a truck is not a luxury, it's a necessity. We rely on this truck to perform many functions each day that cannot be accomplished by a fire engine. It is a specialized piece of equipment that without makes our jobs harder and not able to provide the level of service to our community that they greatly deserve and expect. We can't rely on other agencies around us to serve as our backup. Everyone right now is going through a huge change with how the pandemic has affected our responses. Each city has its own challenges and we need to be able to continue to be self-sufficient as best as possible. I use today as an example, currently today we have all reserve apparatus in service with the exception of our OESN. with the exception of our OES engine, which is our Office of Emergency Services engine. This engine is a last resort for us. It isn't ideal in any way. And it can also be called out to serve throughout the state at a moment's notice and be out of our hands. And we won't have the ability to utilize it. Should that happen, in today's present day, we would not have a single reserve engine to place a truck company on should our first line truck go out of service. We cannot be left with this option for our truck company to respond in a simple pickup truck. This has happened a couple of times throughout the year. Not only is it a complete lack of professionalism, but it takes away our ability to do our jobs correctly, putting not only the lives of the firefighters in jeopardy, but also the citizens of Monterey. I'm not asking you to buy a new truck today. I'm asking you to let us utilize the equipment we have and provide the level of service that makes us one of the greatest cities around. I thank you for your time.
Great. Thanks for your comments, Chris. And that concludes public comment on this item tonight.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. And just to start off the discussion, I'm, I'm kind of hearing a hybrid of, could you put the recommendations back up on the screen, please, Nat?
Sure, I can do that, or Chief Pampels or might have quicker access to it.
I think I might have already closed out that document, but I'll.
Okay, I, I've got it here. Give me just one moment and I can pull it up.
It's on a reserve fire engine, I think. That's where you'll find it. Page 238, I think, Nat.
Okay. I think Google is thinking right now, just, we'll go to, we'll go to the preview. How about that? Here are the options.
There they are. All right, so hearing the, the, by the way, great staff presentation. Thank you for firefighters and professional staff for calling in. As I said before, it looks to me, I'm just hearing that we put the reserve truck back in service. And then a hybrid that Hans, our city manager, has presented to us. And that is to refer to our professional staff, which would include the city manager, the fire chief, our professional firefighters for a recommendation on their right equipment and tools. So that, that would be a hybrid, I think, that I'm, I'm hearing that maximizes public safety. So I'll open it to the council with your thoughts, please.
Hey, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Ed.
I don't see Elsa's hands, so I'll just. Thank you, chief, for your information. And Mayor, I think you nailed it when you talked about a hybrid. For me, if I look at the necessity of a reserve truck and we look at the calculated costs, we know we have to have a primary response unit up at all times, and that's why we would maintain a reserve. So it seems like an option two, an option five. And then I absolutely agree that this should really be sent back to Hans factored in, in the, the budget process. Come back with a, a projection of when we start the process of a replacement. That's the big cost, similar to what we did a year ago when we purchased the other fire apparatus. We know these are always large capital outlays. And as I think it was Chris pointed out, talking about the length and time it takes for design order receiving and then putting into service. So we don't want to cause a downtime without having a primary vehicle and also a second vehicle as a reserve. The way I analyze this is relying on a neighbor fire department's truck that would be considered a reserve for us is too risky. We're not in control of it. It's a favor. We ask through our protocols of mutual aid, but we just can't rely on another neighbor being able to provide us with a reserve, or much less a primary vehicle. So I analyze it kind of like this. The analysis is if it's financial, then we're talking about projecting out what's the cost to maintain a reserve vehicle now. It's good news to hear that we're ahead on the costs. So if we calculate the history, it, it comes out to about $5,000 a month for the reserve vehicle. And if my numbers are wrong, I'm, I'm okay. I'm Kentucky winaging this. The $5,000 a month cost to get us to June, we're talking five, $25,000. Maybe it's already inside of our budget, so we're not talking about new money. Do what you need to do. You know, if you need a reserve vehicle, I think we need to spend that money to make sure we have a reserve vehicle. If we're looking at it as operations, then we're talking about response times. We're talking about, let's wait for the CRA and get the study, ask them to factor in the, the large vehicles we're talking about and a primary and a reserve, that makes perfect sense. But operations, that's your deal. That's not our deal. If we're looking at policy, we're linking it to the study again. And we're also, we're also saying, well, if you need a policy determination that our city manager wants to bring back to the council, I, I think that would be unusual, and I think it's unusual in 2012. They had their reasons, but I would prefer that we send this back to the staff as the mayor has offered. We aren't the ones that know the operations. We don't know the demands of service, so I, I think this should be back to the city manager and the fire chief. And also then we have always the, the legal ramifications, regulations, state, federal, and all of that. You all know that better than we do. And we also heard from the community tonight with the expectation. And that's where I would focus, that we have an obligation to deliver and to keep our commitments to make sure that the fire service has the equipment that they need at all times and that the reserve vehicle is available to fulfill that commitment. So I'm just thinking that send this back, let's get the study, let's get the information about all the other things that we're asking about through the CRA study. Keep number two truck, get it out of mothball and put it in service as a reserve vehicle. Until one of them breaks down, I think we need to have two available service vehicles. And it's going to cost a little money to limp along because we're long into the fleet age. And when you do that, you've got more costs that's on the short order for maintenance, but you've also got less capital outlay that's, we're not making a payment every year for a new truck. But we do need to know when that should start. And I would like to know the long range plan in terms of what's the condition of all of the vehicles and not just the police department, the fire department and across the city. And we do need to at least know that, but we can't order a fire truck today. But we may be able to order a fire truck next year. So some of the stuff is nice to have, some of the stuff is absolutely essential. And right now I think we have to pay attention to the essential and figure out when's the right time to start talking about the replacement vehicle that's going to be attuned to 1.2, 1.4 million dollars. But for now, I'd like to see us keep the reserve vehicle available.
I'd like to make a motion. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to put the reserve truck back into service and that they come back with a long-term policy and budgeting plan for future vehicles after the standards of coverage study is completed.
Okay, I get that.
Okay, good.
My name is Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Tyler, discussion?
So I think this is, this is a really good plan moving forward. I, I'm glad that we actually were able to have this discussion and, and look at how this might be affecting the city in the future. This does connect to something that I've been speaking towards for a while now in, in a concern that I had in regards to removing the funds from the account where we were putting funding aside for vehicles. You know, this is something that's really important in, in order for us not to have to worry about debt-related issues or running into budgetary issues and then being up against a situation where we have to pay for expensive vehicles like fire trucks. So I think whatever plan that may come back in front of us regarding the purchase of any other fire vehicles, it, it should also come with a plan of making sure that we're going to be setting enough funds aside for that replacement because we can't be kicking the can down the road and making it the problem for future generations.
Thank you, Tyler. Thank, any, let me see, Councilmember Dan, anything to add at this point, please?
Very, very short. I, I agree with everything that's been said. But one thing that we haven't discussed is, it sounds to me like in 2012, the council at that time changed a policy where whenever we discuss operations, it, it needs to come to the city council for either a discussion or decision. For me, I, I kind of feel like that decision, and I wasn't there at that council at the time. So I don't know why they made, they decided to make it a decision on operations. But to me, it kind of, it sounds like we're micromanaging our, our, our management and let them do their job. And because they're the experts, and I think the next time this comes to the council, that maybe we should make a decision on whether this type of, of, of item, like the mayor said, should be, we should be in front of us. So, but I agree with everything everybody said, but I, I just, I just think that a decision like this should be made by our management.
Yeah, thanks. I, I agree with that. And I, I obviously to reiterate, public safety is the very, very high priority of the council. I think the fact that we've listened to our professional fire department with the reserve truck back in service and also referring this back to our staff, our professional staff is absolutely the right thing to do. And, and probably the next time we see this would probably be part of a budget when we're buying a new fire engine. That's what I'd like to see it next.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to make an additional comment. And, and Alan, this is not meant as an insult, but I was going to say, well, the 2012 council doesn't work here anymore. But, but there must.
I wasn't on, I wasn't actually on council yet.
Yes, yeah. So I, I don't know what the reasoning is. Find people, you work what you can with what's in front of you at the time. But I agree, this is really, I look at this as almost a study session, valuable information to understand more of the operations, the fire equipment. This is going to probably save us time in the future when we get down to talking about the reason to have two vehicles. But this should not be our final decision, it should be the professionals to do this. But we'll face some of these costs in the future, and so maybe we're a little ahead because we've already got the study session out of the way.
Yep. And I think Tyler's point of, we, we've got to start setting money aside for these kind of things, not only for fire equipment, but for all of our infrastructure. Yep, no more kicking the can down the road.
Well, in some cases, small amounts of money to extend makes sense until we know that clearly it's the time to make the large purchase. But whatever we can do to continue the, the health and safety in the fleet to keep it rolling is important.
Very good. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes, 5:00, and we'll see you all a little bit later at 7 o'clock. Thank you.
See ya.
Good night. Have a good dinner.
Oh, yeah.
Welcome to our evening session of our city council meeting. It's uh thank you for the privilege of your time everyone who's joined us, that council staff and anyone watching and who's participated in our meeting. We appreciate it. And so the first thing we want to do is the pledge of allegiance. us the flag over Colton Hall. Okay, good. And then I would invite everyone to join me in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands.
What nation. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks.
We're getting better at that.
We are. And one of these days, somebody Zoom or Google Meet or FaceTime is going to invent a way for everybody can talk at once and not have just a single speaker and everyone's else being cut off. That's going to be the next leap in technology, I would think. So with that, public comments, if you'd like to speak to the council about items not on the agenda, those of you who are participating in our meeting, this is your opportunity. Please, within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey, if you had a public comment this afternoon, thank you. We'll forego an evening comment, you only get one shot at us. So if there's someone who hadn't spoken before under general public comments, items not on the agenda, please share with us.
Mayor, if I could just describe briefly how people can call in.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm in, I'm in fast mode. Yeah, sorry. So again, we'll turn it back to Nat, who will explain to people how they can participate in our meeting. Thank you, Nat, for that reminder.
No, no problem. And to zip through this pretty quickly, I know there's a lot to take in. We have two ways to participate in our council meetings. One is to join using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and the other is to call in directly into the meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, please use the link that's on the agenda at isearchmonterey.org. To join by telephone, you can dial toll-free 833-568-8864, then enter the meeting ID, which is 1607729333 pound. And if you're prompted to enter a participant ID, you can press pound one more time. All the detailed instructions on how to join our meetings is available on our website at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make public comment, if you're using the Zoom app or the Zoom platform on your computer, you can virtually raise your hand with the button that is listed there, raise hand at the bottom of your screen. If you've dialed in by phone, you can virtually raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself by dialing star six. Public commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak. We ask that all public commenters, please turn off all television or computer speakers or go to another room when you're connected by phone, because any background noise will cause interference with the broadcast. I'll be calling on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised, and we have a three-minute time limit for today's meeting, and we'll show a countdown timer on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay, and we do ask that you please stay within your time limit. The meeting is also being streamed live on YouTube at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10-second delay, and also on Comcast Channel 25 that has a 90-second delay. We look forward to receiving public comments tonight. And back to Mayor Riversen.
Who is muted.
Yes. You want to keep track how many times I do that tonight? So continued public comments, anyone who wants to share anything not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. We look forward to hearing from you.
We have no members of the public who have called in to participate in the meeting.
All right. Then let's go ahead to the public appearance item, and number 11 is a continue workshop that we started at our last meeting for a discussion of 2021 priorities, reopening strategies, and city staff work program. We had the opportunity to hear from several departments, and we do have three departments left, and I think we're going to have an opportunity to take a look at the very complex work programs that the city's working on. So without further ado, back to the energetic city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As the mayor pointed out, this is a continuation of our workshop that we had at our first meeting of 2021. What we added in between, and I hope you have noticed that, that in our revised attachment to the agenda report, we added the name of the departments that is mainly responsible for that work product. I believe that was a suggestion that goes back to council member Albert's input, and we were happy to to put this onto the spreadsheet that you see right now as an attachment. Many times also, the, not many times, all the time, all the agenda reports are a real team effort between staff members, different departments, but also input from council members, stakeholders, stakeholders from business association, but also our neighborhood. So when finally the agenda reports come forward, it might be the main signatory on this might be the community development department, but be assured that many other departments are working on that and always, always, every single time an agenda report comes forward to you, it has received legal review as well as final approval by the city manager's office. With that, we have three departments left, and I think I hand it over to Nat, who can introduce the first department, please. Yeah, and it's, Nat is without sound, it's our Parks and Recreation Department, and our Parks and Recreation Director Karen Larson will introduce that topic.
And now Karen's without sound, I'm sorry. Earlier, lost, lost where my mute button is. Yeah, thank you.
There we go. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for this opportunity to share the Parks and Recreation 2021 priorities. Right now, the pandemic still drives many of our priorities. As we all realize by now, the pandemic is extremely dynamic and requires us to be nimble. We must quickly pivot to respond to ever-changing safety requirements and community service needs. Our first ongoing priority is to react to the COVID-19 pandemic as needed while retaining essential community services as much as resources allow. This includes efforts such as noticing, closing, opening facilities, beaches, parks, campground, and playgrounds, or training and preparing our workforce and work sites to safely operate during COVID-19. It also includes essential services such as food distribution for seniors and needy families, meals on wheels for our senior population, blood drives, programming through our virtual recreation center and sports center, outdoor group exercise classes at the sports center. Parks, trails, and beach maintenance, forestry operations, and fire fuel reduction, preschool for three- to five-year-olds, cemetery services, and more. We must also continue to evolve and adapt. The world is changing, and we must adapt and evolve with it, and investing in technology enhancements is imperative to improve service delivery and operational efficiency. So whether it's enabling the public to make reservations electronically, registering for classes remotely online, participate in programs and services virtually, pay for campsites, cemetery services, or tree removal permits online 24/7, track tree inventory and conduct maintenance work in the field, search cemetery records and burial locations online, or set up preschool and sports center memberships on auto pay. Technology plays a large role in the ability to provide services efficiently and cost-effectively. I'll be honest, this is going to take some heavy lifting, but it's extremely high priority as it affects every division and every area of the department. And that being said, through our recent experience offering essential services to the public, we've learned that we must also continue to be mindful that not everyone owns a smartphone or a computer. So we should still provide manual processes or assistance for participation if needed. We'll also adapt our offerings as a blend of essential services and recreational programming as the situation dictates and the pandemic allows. For example, we're prepared to help facilitate COVID-19 vaccination clinics if needed. Other evolutionary efforts include pursuing funding for a master plan for the old capital site, as well as possibly disc golf and even pickleball at Ryan Ranch Open Space, or an expansion of cemetery services such as an ossuary. Reopen, reinstate, and rebuild. No one wants to reopen more than we do. I can guarantee that. So we look forward to reopening our facilities and reinstating programming and services as soon as it is safe and fiscally feasible to do so. As you know, the virus has triggered closures of multiple facilities across the department, including playgrounds, veterans' park campground, the sports center, and community centers. In anticipation of reopening playgrounds, we've prepared new instructional signage, preparing, promoting safety guidelines, and purchased new hand sanitizing stations for installation, added new mulch, and performed other maintenance to help ensure that we're ready to open as quickly as possible when it's feasible. We also continue to maintain vets campground and have retained social distancing signs and enhanced cleaning measures and preparation for reopening. As for the Monterey Sports Center, the team is doing their absolute best to predict COVID safety requirements and prepare the facility accordingly. This takes a lot of work and extensive coordination, but it's worth it. We have been highly successful each time we've been permitted to open or offer programs. As resources allow, we're also doing everything we can do to clean, adjust, or repair infrastructure while we're closed, so that when service interruptions resume, there's minimal interruptions once we're able to reopen. Reopening our community centers will mostly take a phased approach. It's unlikely that we'll be able to open all four community centers at once. So the team is exploring the best use of space based on service level needs, safety requirements, and available resources. And this phased approach also pertains to summer programming and other classes and activities such as field sports. Partnerships, grants, and cost recovery. It's important to the Parks and Recreation Department to continue to pursue partnerships and grants in order to leverage our general funds for program and service delivery. One example of this is participating in the Laguna Grande JPA, as well as helping to possibly secure state funding for improvements in that area. We'll also develop a fee philosophy to support cost recovery efforts, and we'll develop this philosophy and bring it before you for your review. In conclusion, it's difficult to describe all of the upcoming priorities in such a short time, but I'm happy to address any questions or comments you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. If you have a very large department, I know that it's been really tremendously impacted by the pandemic and the sheltering in place. Are there, may I suggest this, if it's okay with the council? Let's have our presentations, the three presentations, then we can go out to the public, then come back for council questions and comments. Does that sound good?
It does. I think it should be question, I think we should have the council questions, though, before we go to the public, and then we can have council discussion after, at least I think in the past.
Our normal, okay, in that case, shall we have all three presentations at least, and go back to, got it, okay. All right, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you, Alan. Okay. Nat or Hans, our next presentation? We would point out that, Hans, before you begin, I would point out that during the State of the City, which isn't really probably the best describer, Hans and I had an opportunity to share and report to the Matt Poeh, and one of the things I talked about was our police department and the very extensive presentation they made, what, a meeting or two ago? And, and being a role model of community policing, had been practicing the Obama eight strategies for five years now, and our city and me are members of the Obama Foundation Policing Program. And so, while this is going to be a brief presentation this evening, I would suggest if folks just take a look at the police website, and I think you're going to be extraordinarily impressed about what they're doing. So with that, Hans, I'll give it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You already had a chance to listen to the police chief extensively at the end of the remarkable year of 2020, but without further ado, here's, here's Chief Panalso talking about his priorities right now in his police department. I apologize, Chief Hober, I apologize, Chief Hober, too many chiefs.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a promotion or a demotion, we'll let them work it out.
I'm just going to hold my comments, and I'll talk again about that later.
I thought you might.
Thank you, Hans, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I will make this short, but I specifically picked this photograph that you're looking in, because what you'll notice is a whole lot of people without masks on and a police officer without a mask on. So the future of 2021 to me, hopefully, is that we get all these people back together, we have them all over Monterey, we stimulate our economy, and we move into the future. So that's really what that represents, and I'll tell you that in listening to all the other department heads, and we didn't choreograph this, but some three salient points came across with the COVID recovery, and that was people, technology, and capital improvement. And as I listen to them, it's very similar for me. So the people are the staffing and training of the Monterey Police Department, which will continue to be our top priority as we recover from COVID issues and reinstate the positions that we froze for one year, so that we can continue to offer all of the services that that we want to offer and the community demands. Next, moving to technology, during my report on December 15th, we talked a lot about technology, and one of the things was a new records management system implementation, so that we could do some of the things that are talked about through technology specifically to the Racial Identity and Profiling Act in RIPA, and obtaining that information, and then appropriately forwarding that to the state. So technologies is a huge aspect as well. Next is continuing our comprehensive approach to quality of life issues, mostly through various means, but a lot of that is through our multidisciplinary outreach team, and to build on the successes we've had with outreach to the entire community. And finally, a new public safety building, that as long as I am your chief, you will see that as something that we need to do. Our public safety building was, was built in 1959. We might have a city manager that was built at that same time, and he reminds me, there's nothing wrong with that age, and he's right, but it's certainly time to start looking at a path forward so that we can at least plan for a new public safety building, because we are in dire need, we're outgrowing this building, and there's a lot of reasons that we need a new public safety building. And with that, I certainly am available for any questions that you might have.
All right, thanks, Chief Dave. We'll save our questions until after the final presentation, then we'll do council questions, as so nicely recommended by council member Alan. So Hans, our final presentation, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last, but certainly not least, is our Public Works Department, and this is a kind of historic photo of our, our tunnel leading into Del Monte and our sports center there, and our Public Works Director Steve Witrzy will be presenting.
Thank you, Hans. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I guess it goes to show you that, you know, when, when there's a picture shown for a presentation, and the police chief picks one very carefully, and I say, yeah, throw something up there, and I get a picture from 1995 showing the tunnel, nice and, nice and current, so we love it, tunnel ours, and we want to maintain it, so a little humor that we try to start out with, get the ball rolling here. So for Public Works, we're likely your largest department of full-time folks. We have streets, fleet, harbor, building maintenance, parking, and engineering that encompasses our division. You know, we've heard all of our department heads, my fellow cohorts, you know, talk about the need for infrastructure, whether it's a library, whether it's a police, police building, rec centers, improvements, and so forth. It's clear that the goal is to ensure public safety and the safety of public infrastructure. Not only buildings, that's streets, that's sewers, that's storm drains, that's a continuing effort that we go through, through the community's willingness to, to pay for the cost of improvements for the last couple of years with several activities. We've been able to take a large bite out of the issues with the sanitary sewer system. We've taken a large bite out of the continuing road infrastructure, and we continue to work these processes to try to make sure that the infrastructure within Monterey is as safe as possible. We're going to continue doing that into the coming year, that's our primary goal, is to, is to try to make things, to fix things and make things better. Another goal, obviously, is to execute the street rehabilitation efforts funded by the community. Measure P and measure S have been historic, passed with historic high votes for the community. I think we've been pretty successful pushing those, those. I think we've been pretty successful pushing those projects forward. We had a presentation of that a couple nights ago, a couple meetings ago, and like I say, it's one of the things that we continue to look forward and continue to improve the pavement and the ride for vehicles and people within the community. Just on that note for half a second, we're about to kick off another project. Construction's going to be underway in the next week or two with more road projects, so we're just getting right back on it as soon as we can with those projects. Last thing, you know, one of the things that we've had to do, because the budgets have been trimmed significantly, the different funding sources are not as lucrative as they once were. So what we do and what we're going to specialize in is trying to find alternative and creative financing and ways to join projects together to get better bang for our buck. We do that historically with NIP, Measure P projects, we bring those projects together to try to get a better project for the community. And the challenges coming forward are no different. You saw earlier tonight, traffic engineer, City Traffic Engineer Andrea, she was talking about how she's been able to package different funding sources to save the community money. That's something that we're really good at, and it's something that we have come to get some expertise at. And we're going to continue to make those efforts come forward into the coming year. High on the priority for us are photovoltaic and vehicle charging stations. We plan on implementing some of those projects into the coming year to better serve that sector, to bring those electric vehicle tourists who want to come from the Bay Area or parts farther into the community. So that's something that we look to bring forward in a little bit larger scale this coming year. And with that, that's the end of my presentation, and look forward to questions as we look at that convertible, was it a Malibu with rally stripes? Very nice.
Really? Very good. All right, everybody, that was our glorious Public Works Director. I've been saving that for you.
I appreciate that. There you go. Very nice.
All right, let's continue with staff presentation, please.
Yeah, that was the last department, although we do, we could share briefly just a few words on the staff work program, which Hans already mentioned, that we've added a column to designate the lead department. And just a reminder to everyone, including those who are watching, the purpose of the first column is really just to be a numeric reference, not to identify what's the first priority and what's our 67th priority as an example. We've sorted this spreadsheet based on urgency level first, then importance, and then it's in alphabetical order. And as you go to the city staff work program, you'll see that, and we'll share it on the screen briefly, it goes all the way down to a total of 97 priorities and continues to be a living document, if you will, for our staff to add, modify, and work through throughout the year. That's all we have on the work program. Our intent wasn't to go through every single item on the list.
Yeah, thank you, Nat. I think it's because, obviously, we've had this material from our last meeting as well, had the chance to study it. So let's do council questions, then we'll go to the public. Questions only at this point, and otherwise you can wait until after public comment, however you want to do it. Councilmember Alan, questions, please.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, thanks for all the presentations, and thank you to all of our staff for the hard work that they're doing. It is very appreciated. I had a few questions relating to parks and rec. We've heard from Frisbee Golf folks, and I wonder if you could just kind of explain where we're at with the Frisbee Golf and what the plans are for that.
Well, right now, we are in the process of working on a temporary encroachment permit for the items that they have out of the disc golf course right now, so that it will remain safe until we are able to do the ADA improvements and then work on a joint use agreement with one of the groups of stinging jellies. So.
Okay. And we had, there was funding to do some of that, and then we had to reallocate some of that in response to the COVID crisis. Is that correct?
I don't remember if it had actually been appropriated yet. I think it was going to be a potential NCIP project, and the group itself, the Stinging Jellies, was offering to bring some funding forward as well.
Thank you. And then I wonder if you could say more about the old capital site and where we're at as far as the planning for that goes. Has the Parks and Rec Committee begun discussions about the old capital site?
I believe it was right before the pandemic, we had taken a tour of the old capital site. As you know, we had just received the old capital site as the city and as the department. So we took the Parks and Recreation Commission on a tour of the site so they can start to build some familiarity. And then the pandemic hit, and it kind of went on the back burner. We are now in the process of hoping that NCIP will be reinstated or possibly be able to secure some other funding for a a comprehensive plan, overall plan, because we have so many people who have thoughts on that site, and we definitely want to include public input as well as have a thoughtful plan going forward instead of like allowing first come, first served and something happening, and then we think down the road, oh, if we just thought about this, we would have maybe done things a little bit differently. So I'm hoping in the near future, we'll be able to secure some funding for a master plan. And also, there's been some fuel reduction efforts and some other park maintenance work that's been done out there. So we'd like to show the commission that as well. If that's something the council would like to do, I'm sure that's something we could arrange for you to be able to see the site, too.
That's great. I think coming up with a master plan and having a lot of public input is a really good idea. And then my last, my last, yeah.
I just want to dampen the expectation. So I really commend the Parks and Recreation Director for being receptive and saying, well, we can do the impossible. We cannot do the impossible. We cannot do the old capital site in the foreseeable future. It is on our horizon to tackle it in a meaningful way, probably October, November, December of 2021. Before that, we have to reopen a senior center, probably two recreation centers. We have to figure out how we are reopening the sports center, and we will have, hopefully, one or two camps. And all of that is taking place with a staff that is, that Karen can probably count with less than two hands that she has right now. And every Monday, we have a food drive of 300 to 350 people. We have blood drives. There's a lot going on right now. So yes, that's one of the opportunities I have tonight to also just carefully remind us of what times we are in, that there is no staff right now. However, Karen is absolutely correct. We have the old capital site on our horizon. Having said that, realistically, October, November is when we will start meaningful work on that topic.
I appreciate that and totally expect that. Number one is getting things reopened and recovering. But I do think it's important that we not lose sight of long-term planning. And, you know, a lot of what we're doing is sort of responding, and that is important as well. I was going to bring this up during my comments, but I think there's short-term planning and there's long-term planning, and then there's just ongoing.
We lost your sound, Councilmember Hoffa.
Okay, sorry. So I'm not sure. I was just saying, I appreciate the comment. Obviously, immediate response to COVID and reopening and recovering is the first priority, and certainly Parks and Rec was one of the most, if not the most hardest hit by the budget crisis. But for all of us, we need to be looking both at short-term as well as long-term planning. And I'll have some more comments on the long, basically how I see that working when we get to our comment section. But I just don't want to lose track of these things. It's such a, we're such a dynamic, complicated city that sometimes we can lose track of things. So that's part of why I'm bringing these up, which gets me to my last thing, which is I also hope we don't lose track of the conversation about a dog park. And that was something we'd been talking about for, I don't know, maybe about four or five years. And so when we do get back to the long-range planning, I hope that is part of the conversation. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for those questions. Other council members? Councilmember Ed, please. Questions?
Yes, thank you very much, Karen. I know it's a comprehensive department with a lot of moving parts and never enough people to do the work. So I wanted to ask about early on in March when COVID hit, we all embraced, and you were really the lead department that was calling those that were separated from the sports center, the senior center, the library, and so you were tasked with making those phone calls, and you reached a whole lot of people in Monterey. So I'm just wondering, is that anything that we're still able to do, maybe at a lesser degree? Or are we still able to, from time to time, talk with folks that were steady users of the senior centers and the sports center?
I have to say, definitely at a lesser degree because of the different focus with the meal distribution, but we are constantly in contact with people who are needing that type of support. When it comes to things like taxi vouchers, we're having to talk to the same seniors every month to remind them how to obtain the services that they need. So we're not actually having a list of people and going down the list and cold-calling people like we were back in March, but we're definitely in touch with the community, and they know how to find us as well. Our phones ring off the hook, so it's really good.
Yeah, and thank you very much for that effort. That's been very valuable, and I hear about it all the time. And so those are folks that really appreciated hearing from somebody early on until they sort of got ramped up with knowing how to access the information. So that was the only question I I'm going to check off a couple others that Alan covered.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Other questions? Dan, Tyler, questions at this point? Wait for comments later? Okay, let's go to the public then, please.
And Mayor Robertson, we have no members of the public who has expressed interest in adding to this conversation.
Okay, well, we'll consider that a vote of confidence on our fantastic city then. Take what you can get. All right, council comments and observations? Alan, let's start with you again, because I know you started our previous discussion so nicely, and you had some thoughts and guidance that you were going to share with us.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, when you look at the work program list, it's a very comprehensive, it's a very involved and very detailed list, and there's a lot of work that we are asking our staff to do. I don't disagree with anything on the list. I think that all of those items are important. I think that they're all you know, addressed in an appropriate way on the list. Really, I have just some suggestions that have more to do with the overall, what I think of as kind of strategic planning. And that would be, right now, we kind of have a list of all these different tasks, but I don't feel like we have a plan. And sort of like, this is sort of, normally, when you think of strategic planning, you think of, you have a vision. And then, and then you kind of have objectives or action, you know, action plans that fit into and sort of fulfill that vision. And I feel like we've got great ideas, but I'm not quite sure. I know what the vision is. Other than right now, it's obviously responding to COVID, as it should be. Like, that's our most immediate pressing need, both the economic as well as the operational and healthcare impact on all of us and on the city. But I just think it would be helpful to think, to think of the various tasks on the list. Some of them are sort of ongoing, and I see that over there on the timeline, those ones that are ongoing. In a way, it's helpful to see that, just to see that there is obviously ongoing work. But, you know, I really think we should be focusing on long-term kinds of things. When I think about the long-term challenges to the city and the kinds of long-term, and by long-term, I'm talking about anywhere from two to 10 years, kind of planning that we need to do. I think of our long-term infrastructure plan, and I think we heard a number of department heads speak to that, whether it's the police department, the fire department, the library, public works, and Parks and Rec. I mean, I think almost every area has, and parking, they all have the wharf and the harbor. They all have long-term infrastructure needs. And I think we need to come up with a plan, a comprehensive plan of how we're going to get there, what the priorities are, and how we're going to pay for it over a 10-year plan. I mean, I also imagine Monterey 2030. So in 10 years from now, what do we want to see the city look like, and what do we want to see? How do we maintain all of the things that make the city great, but how do we get to where we want to go? And so that would be one thing. I think a long-term kind of infrastructure plan, again, Monterey 2030. I also think of climate change and its impacts, both in terms of ocean level rise, which I think we all know a little bit about, as well as the potential for more fires. And so I'm thinking also along those lines, and there are some of these things that are, these action items or these work program items that fit into all of, to these ideas. So for example, the EV charging is part of a response to climate, you know, a climate action response. But then there are other things like how, what are we going to do with the wharf, with the harbor, with the tunnel in terms of ocean level rise? So I think we need a climate action and adaptation plan that has like a 10- or 20-year sort of horizon. Housing is something we've been talking about, and it's, and again, it's on here. But I really think that maintaining affordability is important. Rental assistance is something we've initiated, and I think it's going very well. But I want to make sure that we have a long-term way of funding it. And then also, at some point, we need to assess, is the way that we're doing it, you know, the way that we want to do it long-term or not, and how do we want to fund it long-term? And then in terms of fiscal recovery, I think, obviously, I think cannabis, which we're working on, fits into that, because it could generate, you know, anywhere from one to three million, I think. I'd like to hear other people's thoughts on some of these ideas, as well as, like, what else, when we're talking about fiscal recovery, we don't, we don't, the city doesn't, by and large, create jobs. We create the conditions for the private sector to create jobs. We can, in some ways, create stimulus, and we can create the infrastructure. But I don't know if there are other things that I'm missing of what we can and should be doing as far as the fiscal recovery goes. So those were just a few of my thoughts.
Thank you, Alan. Those are really, really good thoughts. We'll be discussing those going forward. Thank you so much. Other comments and questions from the council? Councilmember Dan, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So I also would like to thank the staff for putting together this list. I know that probably, once you put the list together, you were amazed at how much you actually have on the plate. I think I am, because I didn't realize 95 items, and I'm sure this is, this is just projects that that are moving forward, and you still have your daily duties in each one of your departments. So that must be difficult to try and get this list done at the same time, your duties. So I want to thank the staff for putting in the lead department, because to me, that's really important to find out which departments have the most burden from this list. And what I was really surprised at when I saw this list was the amount of imbalance between a lot of the departments. I thought one department would have a majority of the list, so it's very, it's very important for me to see that. And so I appreciate putting that on. What I'd like to see in this list is, because these are projects that do have a timeline, and I'm sort of kind of into timelines, it would be nice to have an update in the next six months of the list and tell us, you know, if you've knocked some of these items off the list, so we went from 94 to 85, or 70, or or three, but maybe not, but it would be nice to see you progressing, us progressing into us progressing into making this list a little bit smaller, at least. And I know that as the years go on, you'll keep adding or we will keep adding projects, but it'd be nice to see an update. And I wanted to remind the public, and it's what the, it's what the city manager said the last time we had this list out, is that this, this is not necessarily one to 94, 94 is the lowest priority, because each one of the departments have their own list themselves. But I do want to mention that there was a comment in the city manager's Friday folder a couple of couple of weeks ago about the wireless companies coming in and you expect of the staff, the staff, the staff expects that we will see members of the of the wireless community wanting to to put projects in our city. So for me, I think it's really important that we look at the wireless ordinance quicker than than later, because as the staff says, they expect that to come. Let's see if there's anything else I have here. I think that's, that's pretty much all I have for this. And once again, thank you, staff, for putting together. Now, I do want to, I do want to, to let people know that I do agree with Alan, that there's a bigger picture on this and that we do need to look at it, at a big plan for the future. Thank you very much. That's it.
Thanks so much. Councilmember Tyler, Councilmember Ed?
Yeah, I'll ju- jump in.
Thank you.
So I'd also like to give my appreciation to the, the staff that was, they were able to provide presentations tonight and, and all of their staff for, for all the hard work that's going on within the city. It's, I know that a lot of the work that you all do is thankless. And so there just can't be enough appreciation for what you all do as public servants. So thank you for, for doing what you do. And along with the appreciation, I do just want to give a shout out to a really cool tool. This is a thank you, but also a public service announcement regarding the Have Your Say Monterey. I think it's a really great opportunity for the, the city of Monterey to continue to be at the forefront in innovative in regards to how we receive public input. So HaveYourSayMonterey.org, I believe it is. And so that's a great space tool for, for residents to be able to provide input and see it in a more interactive way. So anyways, much appreciation to the staff for starters. And, and speaking of staff, I, I do want to start kind of my, my list here with, with the identification of people. As you may know, I'm just really interested in nurturing and taking care of our workforce. They are our most important asset. And so I know that there's a lot of work going on and the HR director presented it on that earlier this month, so I look forward to seeing how that progresses. But I think there's also an opportunity here, not just with Pete, the people side of things, but maybe perhaps all aspects of the city via the directorates, where there could be a dashboard available where people can see data and information of things, of the workings of the city. And I imagine that maybe some of that can be specifically designated for the city council and the directors. But I also think that there is space for the public to be able to go on and see this as well. And one of the things that I think about is when people in the public request information that they're entitled to request, right? I know that staff takes a lot of time churning wheels and producing that information once that request comes in, because there's a shot clock, right? They have to get that information within a certain period of time to the residents. Well, why aren't we finding spaces to just make that information more publicly available? So I think there's a lot of opportunity to just be a little bit more transparent. It's not that we're doing it intentionally. I think the point that I'm making is being more intentional about making this information more, more available in allowing our residents to be able to provide us input and feedback that will make the work that we do better as an agency. So I just kind of wanted to start off there. I am like dancing right now off of the comments that Alan is making, because I, that's definitely the, the lane that I swim in is in regarding having a strategy and thinking about the long term. I know that Ed was making a comment. It might have been at the last council meeting when I was identifying the need for us to be forward-thinking and have a plan about some of these things as we move forward in the future. And I absolutely agree with the fact that the pandemic is the most urgent thing and we need to like put out the fire that's in front of us. 100% agree. There's no disagreement there. But when I'm thinking about, you know, legacy or, you know, future generations that are children, you know, I want to make sure that we're leaving a city that is that was very forward-thinking and in being intentional about what we're trying to do for the future as opposed to maybe just kind of creating things for now. So I, I definitely think that it would be worth one of our retreats, whether it's this year or maybe next year, where we maybe contract out and have some professionals come in that might help us guide that discussion and it be very intentional. I imagine documents coming out, working documents that come out of this and in specific tasks that can help guide us as we move forward. I don't think it would be a waste of an investment. I think it would be very intentional and smart and the right thing to do. So I really appreciate Alan, you making those comments. I couldn't agree more. Off of your comment, Alan, in regards to just kind of thinking about strategy and where there might be spaces for us to have these additional conversations. One of the things that I, my mind often goes back to is how are we being intentional about maybe finding those industries that we can pull in to help diversify the industries that are within our region? So some of the industries that I think about are tech, marine science, education, public service. I mean, I think there's a lot of opportunities to expand. And when I say public service, I'm thinking of the Panetta Institute. I mean, there's a lot of opportunities missed. How can we leverage maybe what's already an advantage for us to further expand those, but also find new areas? And I think that there's space to be intentional about going out there and looking for those things. So I think this might be the last thing I say, and it's, there's a couple of things within it, but I'm hoping that maybe at our next retreat that, well, I'll say two things. So at our next retreat, I'm hoping that we can be intentional about having a conversation about developing policy around what we can and cannot do. I guess that's not the right way of saying it. What what our role is with the city a little bit better. And so let me try to describe that. So there's funds within the city manager's office about us as councilmembers going to trainings and, and conferences. Is there, is there a document that we can look at to say, hey, each council member gets X amount of dollars? Or there are, you know, these types of events are okay and we can spend unlimited, right? I think that we need to have some kind of guiding document, because you know, we're responsible to the taxpayers and just kind of having this kind of ambiguous policy, I think, leaves it up to the city manager and city staff to do it. And I don't think that we should put that on staff to be able to dictate what, what is and is not okay as far as elected officials and perhaps even appointed officials within the city. And maybe we think it's important to send those individuals to training. So anyways, I think of that. Developing some kind of policy there, it would be helpful. And this also goes into the letterhead. I know that the mayor oftentimes, as the figurehead, as the mayor, will use City Hall letterhead to submit letters off and signs it as the mayor, not on behalf of the council. But can I do that as a council member and also use the letterhead, but sign it as a council member, right? Is that, is that, or is it not okay? We should, I think we should be intentional about developing some kind of policy or some kind of parameters around the, and there's many different things. I'm just kind of giving these as examples, but I think that there is space here for us to be clear about what is and is not okay. And then I, and with that conversation, I'll make one point about this and then my last point is us as elective, as, as the elected body submitting things on the agenda. So I know that we've been talking about this and maybe looking at updating that policy. So I think it might be worth spending some time at our next retreat, focusing on what does policy look like, or procedures look like around us being elected officials and how that works with staff? There was one more thing. Oh, yes. So so I, I, I think that this is really helpful. It might be good to just make one of our treats every year where we get a report out from all the department heads. It's just kind of really nice to hear maybe top two or three goals from each department and to kind of hear maybe updates from the prior year and maybe kind of getting a brief about what things they were able to achieve and what's on the horizon. But I, I think this kind of just ties to the strategic discussion again. It would be nice to just kind of have that, that, that really specific focused conversation and how that all ties in. So I'll stop there. I, again, I appreciate all the work being done and I'm feeling good about the energy and the direction that we're going in here. So thank you.
And we look forward to those, to those conversations in our next retreat. Thank you, Tyler. Councilmember Ed?
Okay. Thank you to all the department heads that presented two weeks ago and tonight. Great jobs on all, great and, and very in-depth reporting. We have a lot of things going on. The work plan, as we saw it tonight, is one-dimensional, because it's on a piece of paper. But if you were to have this as like a virtual ongoing, vibrant, real life, you would see so many different layers of it. I'm sure that there's Gantt charts behind it. There's progress reports internally. There's, there's a lot of things going on. So I think we got just a snapshot. We see more in the mid-year budget. We'll see more in the budget process. So I look forward to that. I was going to ask a question about the public works process, but I'm going to just just abandon that for now and with a little short story. We saw the photograph tonight that was cars coming out of the tunnel, what we would call inbound, so coming into town from New Monterey. So that view to me brings back so many memories. And I remember a time when I went to work on a beat and you could almost call, I mean, you could count on it, that a beat officer was probably going to take two accidents at the southbound curve or the northbound curve of Lighthouse on the other side of the tunnel. And Hans is smiling. If Rich Deal is listening, that was a massive undertaking and a major project to accomplish and straighten out the Lighthouse curve to save lives and stop people from getting injured. Progressed down the other way, coming out of the tunnel, down Del Monte. Washington Boulevard used to be a two-way street, so cars used to come out that way. There used to be businesses where the sports center is. And cars would come out of the tunnel and actually crash up on the sidewalk and into those buildings. So, so I look at this back as man, we've come a long way, baby. We are, we are a remade city. Public Works, infrastructure, you know, sports center, conference center. We have so many things to look at to say that we distinguish ourselves. So I say that is kind of a long-term, but looking back of where we've been. And we're doing the same thing. So everything we're doing in our work plan, it really truly is looking long-term and at the same time, short-term. And at the same time, we're working in a crisis. So I just want to caution, don't stop thinking. That's great creative stuff. But I said this last time, let's not lose sight of the fact that we're working short-term in a crisis. And we'll have part of our attention to the long-term, because that's where it should be. I want to read a quote from a book that is very, very apropos. I won't share the screen, but I'll just read the title, Crisis Change and How to Lead When It Matters Most. And the title of the book is You're It. So this message is really for us and the city manager. One quote on many valuable chapters. I'll just read a quick sentence. "Your responsiveness and flexibility are assets that when strategically applied, realign forces to support and encourage what you hope to accomplish. Get it right and you advance. Get it wrong and you are stopped dead in your tracks." So I think as we go through this process, we want to get it right. We want to think strategically. But we also want to have our eye on the current ball, which is let's get out of the pandemic. Let's take care of the city. Let's take care of the folks that need it the most right now. And not get too far out and make the work plan list double or triple because we're overtaxing our personnel. So an eye to now and an eye to the future is our challenge. That, and I read that for the city manager and the city council as a reminder that this is a big game, a big deal and big responsibilities. And look forward to breaking these all down when we get together in a work workshop to really put some creative ideas together. And that's all the comment I have on this.
Thank you, Ed. I appreciate all of the council members' perspectives on this and we'll continue to roll up our sleeves and take care of our city. Let's go to the city manager's update on COVID-19 response efforts. Hey, city manager, you're scaring me with all those slides you're showing.
Sorry, I couldn't quite hear you.
Hans, we can't hear you.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don't worry. A few slides, but it will, doesn't take long.
I want to ask Siri if she wants to be our city manager.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Hans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My COVID-19 update, 312 days into the adventure.
Wow.
The stay-at-home order was extended. Today, the ICU capacity is at 7.4%. We are creeping slowly up again. The trend looks slightly better. What would I, what the health professionals are attributing that to is that we don't have the holidays, we don't have Thanksgiving, we don't have parties right now, and the, the folks just don't have enough chances to misbehave. And that shows directly in positive results within the ICU capacity. Here's some local numbers. Late this afternoon, the county published their latest numbers that combined Sunday and Monday data. We have right now over 21,000 active cases in Monterey County, over 515 in the city of Monterey. 255 members of our county have died. Right now, 34 cases in Chomp. That's, that's also trending downwards. We had at one time, over 60 folks at Chomp as positive. So we're trending in, in, in the right direction. Our messaging for the city of Monterey, when you look at 515 active cases, we started something new, I believe, in either early January or late in December, where we basically now highlight in our daily emails the data from the city of Monterey. Instead of just publishing the county numbers, we also want to create some sort of better understanding that every single resident in Monterey can help contain the virus. This is a curve that we also show now. This is coming from Chomp, from the Chomp website. It shows you on the top, the cumulative cases, number of cumulative cases at Chomp. And it shows you the, the number of folks that are positive at Chomp right now. And again, when you look at the, the numbers and you look at when the spikes are, you see that there is a nexus between the Christmas, the season celebrations around you see that there is a nexus between the Christmas, the season celebrations around Christmas. But you also see the, the, the New Year's celebration. And thankfully, the numbers are trending slightly downwards for right now. That's no reason to, to think that this might continue like that. This is what was published late this afternoon by the Monterey County. Thirty, 36,126 confirmed cases. This is data that contains numbers from Sunday and Monday. And again, hospitalization is trending in the right direction. And unfortunately, we had five more fatalities over the past two days. I want to talk what we are working on as staff vaccination rollout. Everybody is talking about vaccinations and every single one of us has three to five great ideas how the county should do it. The, the good news here is that, that our first responders in the city of Monterey have been vaccinated. Fire on police are almost done. Fire department will actually resolve, will, will, will start receiving the second shot at, at the end of this week. Another bit of good news last week was that the state authorized all our emergency medical technicians. These are all our firefighters because every single firefighter is an EMT. The state authorized them to administer vaccinations. With that, we have basically our whole team of firefighters as vaccinators available and we will make good use of them. As a city, we are working on many levels with various vaccination work groups. The MCHA has a vaccination task force. The Community Foundation has COVID-19 gatherings. I, I belong to both of those two workforces, task forces, I'm sorry. We also converse regularly with Supervisor Adams, with other elected officials from the peninsula, and also with the county administrator and his team. So we're trying to, to work on all levels. Here's, here's an observation that, that I wanted to share with all of you as well as the county is right now in a phase where they have all the good advice that they can get from everyone, from ag industry to, to local governments, to hospitality industry. What they don't have right now is vaccines. So when, when, when you hear growing frustration or, or concerns being expressed about the county's responsiveness to, to all those ideas, well, there's nothing to organize yet because the vaccines have not rolled out to that level that, that you can really look at mass vaccination sites, et cetera. So my, my appeal to, to, to you as well as to all those who are still listening is give the, give the county the time, give the county the moment to reflect of how they go forward. They are part of a bigger system, which is the state of California. And last but not least, the federal government has frankly screwed up the rollout of the vaccinations. And it takes some time to clear, clear this all up. And that hopefully is, is, is coming sooner than later. But trust me, there are a lot of good people working on different task forces to figure it all out. But ultimately, it will be the Monterey County Health Department and the vaccination that they receive, which will make the difference. Here, here's some numbers. The state of California is catching up with, with respect to, to what we have, what we are receiving in doses and what we have administered. You see here that 3.2 million doses have been shipped so far, 3.9 are ordered. So 3.2 have shipped and we have so far given out in the state of California a little over 47%. So those numbers have increased dramatically over the past week or so. And, and you can see that also locally here as, as we see in, in the city of Monterey where our first responders have been vaccinated. Today, we, we, we continued giving out vaccination to first responders here on the peninsula through our fire department. And we received this morning or last night, the 228 doses of Pfizer. And those are being administered as we speak over the next two, three days. I want to talk about the rental assistance program and that is, I believe, my last slide. We, we are rapidly expending the money for the rental assistance program. We had allocated a little bit over $820,000 to that. Last week alone, we spent close to $40,000. We have spent, issued 279 checks so far to 129 different households. And so far, we have left $133,812 in our remaining balance. So what I want you to assure is that our housing program manager is standing by to come back to us at, in the foreseeable future to look, look how we continue this sustainment of rental assistance program. We, we have additional funding identified. There is also, as I stated last week to you, there's funding coming from the latest stimulus program that was passed by the federal government in December. And there is about $2.6 billion being allocated for rental assistance program to the state of California. And we are hoping that sooner or later, we, we learn how much this really translates into dollars for the city of Monterey. So there's additional funding from, coming from the federal government. And we also will identify some additional funding coming from our housing program income. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you very much. Questions? Let's go to the public. Oh, I'm sorry, Tyler. Did you want to ask a question first, please?
Yeah, no, I just had a question about the rental assistance program. Is it possible for us to get a kind of like a, a pros and cons or what worked, what didn't work? Recap of, of the experience that we had with this first go-around and, and looking to see if there's opportunities and making those more efficient. Because I think speaking a little bit to Alan's point, it would be great to see this, something implemented more long-term within the city. And I think that this trial run and maybe even this next one here can kind of help us refine whatever that system looks like. So I'm wondering if that could be something that we get in the next report.
Yeah, I, absolutely. We, we will take a good look at that. It comes down to choices sooner or later. The funds that we are using right now for, for, for the rental assistance program is funding from housing program. And I understand also that we would like to allocate funding to service providers in the future that, that help homeless folks. And of course, there is the newly opened shelter out in Seaside that, that we also have committed to maintain. So it, 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 we will look at, at all the numbers. We will look also at the various other priorities that US council have expressed over the years. And then, then it comes down to, to the choices. With respect to, to lessons learned, that's, that's an excellent point. We will be looking at that as well because I think we are hopeful that the new round of funding might actually allow us to apply some of the lessons learned. What I mean by that is we might be less restrictive of, or less falling under the rules of HUD for the, for the additional funding that we are getting. And so one of the lessons learned will be probably also that, that we can make it less bureaucratic because we have to apply a lot of rules from, from HUD in order to spend their money. So yes, we, we, we will be looking at that, but I cannot tell you right now, Councilmember Williamson, whether we do this in two weeks' notice and come up with a lessons learned program right now. Having said that, I know that, that our housing program manager, Grant Leonard, is working on that as well. And keep in mind, in, in our backend, we, we are still looking at eviction control moratorium, et cetera, et cetera. So there are several irons we still have in the fire in order to, to, to be, to be responsive to various challenges that are being posed to us. But absolutely, yes, we, we will look at that, probably not in, in two weeks.
I, I, I just would not, I guess, a huge urgency there other than the fact of hopefully we're prepared with that kind of approach before the funds become available for the next round. And, and just kind of some initial, additional nuggets that I'm thinking about that hopefully could be included in that is what was the relationship like with two-in-one? How successful was that? And are there opportunities to maybe use, you know, a third-party provider? So that way our staff don't get overwhelmed with this kind of working can maybe start focusing more on those things on our work list that are kind of being pushed to the side right now. And so is there opportunities to work with other organizations like Salvation Army that kind of are built for that? So anyways, that's kind of the, the thinking that I have behind that. I just kind of leave that with you as, as you look at the possibility of pulling that info together.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we just keep, I, I would just caution everyone. We looked at third-party providers. There were some stiff fees that, that they wanted from us in order to manage that. Now this money goes directly to, to rental assistance instead of paying for the third-party providers, which, which were not overcharging us, but that was, these were sums of money that, that have now helped rental folks. And, and, and as we said right now, for us is let's get out of COVID. And then if we have a rental assistance program, all those questions make complete sense. But for right now, I, I trust our system. If there's a way to streamline it, to make it easier, because the funding makes it easier for us to allocate, allocate the, the money, absolutely. But, but let's get through the next three, five months and then we take a deep breath and reassess the rental assistance program and prioritize jointly together. And then, of course, it's council has the last word.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we're at the questions. Do you have a question, Alan, or a comment?
Comment.
Okay, well, we'll go public then come back to comments. But let's go public, please, Nat, and then we'll go straight back to Alan.
Just a reminder, for those who have joined us, please feel free to raise your hand if you'd like to comment. But I do not see any of our attendees with raised hands, so no public comment.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilmember Alan.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to really congratulate all of our staff for our collective COVID response. When I, you know, I'm, I know all of the council are very proud to be council members in the city of Monterey. I know I am for many reasons. But this is one of the top ones. When I look at all levels of government, from the federal government, to the state government, to the county government, to other cities, I feel like our city has responded as well as we possibly could, given the limitations that we have. And I'm just very proud of that, whether it be our parks and rec, helping deliver food to people, whether it be the library, finding ways to deliver books to people, whether it be our, our face mask policy and the enforcement of that in a, and I think a reasonable, but yet effective way, or whether it be our rental assistance and business grants programs. I think we've really done a great job and I just couldn't be prouder.
Oh, thank you for that, Councilmember Alan. Any more comments? Councilmember Tyler.
I just want to throw out, Hans, you were speaking to the county kind of having an overload of, of input. And I think one thing that's important to point out about the county health department is that during the last recession, a lot of positions in, in the health department were cut and they never came back. So it's, it's a trimmed-down department. They definitely need more resources there. But I think you make a really valid point. And finally, I would just kind of echo everything that Alan said. I, I agree, agree. I don't want to belabor the point, but I definitely think it deserves acknowledgement. It's, it's definitely something to be proud, proud of, especially as a council member in the city. So thank you.
Okay, Ed or Dan, any comments about the report? We'll go to council comments. All right, let's go to council comments then. Ed, do you have council comments this evening?
Sure. I'll say this one first as what I was going to say. But the city manager gave us some information about the county status and what they're doing. But I think it's still relevant. So I just hope that the county officials and the supervisors will continue to communicate as they have ramped up, reach out and utilize all cities and allow the cities to help them be successful using our available resources and to accelerate the vaccine shots into the arms of all Montereyans as fast as possible. So I think we're on the right track now. I just want to extend that, that the best winning combination is always collaboration and to consolidate forces and use all the, the resources that are available. So I was excited to hear that the state has authorized all of our EMTs to be able to step in and help. And I know we have a lot of talented retired professionals that are standing by, waiting for the call to find out how they can help. So when we have more vaccines available, I hope that we can fully engage all the cities and the county with massive efforts. On the personal note, from last year to this year, with some of the changes on League of California Cities, I'm renewing to represent the city on the Public Safety Committee for the California League of Cities. So the meetings in 2021 will be virtual. So there won't be any travel or conferences away, and that's, that's a good thing for me. So I'll, from time to time, report back when we have relevant information. Also, we rotate on each one of our boards as you all do with your board representation. So the incoming chair for Tamsi, the Transportation Authority Monterey County, Luis Lejo has done a fabulous job. And now I'll step into the, the chair's position for Tamsi. And I hope that I don't have to call on the alternate from the city that has to attend, but I sure hope to be able to make all those monthly meetings. In addition to that, we have the rail subcommittee where we have some exciting long-range projects that will hopefully have a presentation here in the next two or three months from Tamsi. And also, I'm on the executive committee for Tamsi. So full plate with that, for transportation issues that really help bring home things to fulfill projects in the city of Monterey and all the cities in Tamsi. So in part, one of the finest things that we were able to do is collaborate our efforts and push across Measure X, which is certainly helping all the cities and especially the city of Monterey has benefited from that. So we've got a great group of hard-working people and staff. And Rich Deal, who worked for the city, has retired. He went to work his last couple of years at Tamsi and he's retired now and still a resident of the city of Monterey. But things are very, very busy with all those staffs and all of the other committees that I serve on, Ambag and Tamsi. And I'll stop there because I'm sure I'm going to forget one. But it's going to be a busy, exciting year and lots of virtual meetings. Thanks, thank goodness we've got Zoom.
Really, congratulations on the, the chair, too. That's, that's, you'll do a great job, Ed.
Well, thank you. And I'll tell you how it's going after a month. I might be ready to, might be ready to bail on that one. It's a heavy.
Oh, we'll see. All right, Councilmember Dan, council comments, please.
Thank you. So over the last week or two, I've received a few phone calls from restaurants and the, the chamber about third-party delivery from restaurants to home and, and the cost for that delivery. And as you can imagine, if it's reported 30, 40% of the product, the restaurants are, are struggling as it is. And so I was going to bring it up anyway, but the city is tomorrow hosting a a, a meeting with those restaurants and a few other people. And, and so I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing what they have to say about this issue. Because again, it's a town hall meeting, by the way. Because again, it's, it's important that our restaurants succeed. So I, I think, I'm not quite sure, again, maybe Hans could tell us how we get to that meeting. But, but I thanks, thank the city to, for putting that on. The second item is something that came up in the last meeting. And that's the process to place an item on the agenda. I think Councilmember Williamson was talking about that also. And seeing that the last time in a meeting in December, we, we discussed almost 45 minutes on whether an item should be on the council agenda or not. I, I, I think that we should at least discuss that process again. I know we discussed it a year ago, but, but I think that it would be good for this council for the sake of our meetings, that we at least look at some different ideas in the way that we do it now. So I, I have ideas, but I'm not going to go into, obviously. So I, I'd like to see somewhere along the line, whether it's in a a study session to look at that process. So those are the only two items I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Tyler, council comments?
Yeah, so in light of Ed sharing his participation with the League of Cities, I did want to share that the chair of the LGBTQ Caucus reached out to me and asked me to sit on that caucus. And so I, I agreed to join and I started my term last month. So haven't had a meeting yet, but I look forward to that and, and, and I'll be sure to share with everybody what comes from that experience. Also, in regards to Monterey One Water, things are moving along in regards to the wells. So the, the, they're kind of quick preview overview, but there was the, the issues with the shallow wells. And then there was the deep wells. So they finished the shallow wells. Those are pumping at, at rates as, as expected now at this point. And the, the, the deep wells are producing actually more than what they expected. So everything is going well there. And on top of that, we're in the process of developing two additional wells that will be able to support additional capacity. And so the, the, the third well that they're working on should be completed in November. And the fourth one should be completed in, by February of next year. So we're moving along quite well and, and it's a, it's a great opportunity for us to get some additional acreage feet of water in the region. So good stuff going on there. And I will leave it at that. Happy New Year again, everybody. This is fun stuff.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Alan?
Yeah, I wanted to again acknowledge another success of our staff, which some of you may have read about last week in the weekly that the developer of the OZIO Plaza has finally begun paying the city back the two and a half million dollar loan that's owed to the city. So I just wanted to congratulate the staff. And that's, that's, that's another very important thing because we certainly can't afford to have our residents being stuck with that bill being unpaid. I also wanted to let council and the community know, you may have heard that Casa de Noche Buena, which is the peninsula's homeless shelter for women and families is going to be opening early in January. And they're taking applications now. So if you are in need of help or you know of somebody who may be in need of help, you can go to communityhumanservices.org and you'll see a link there to Casa de Noche Buena. So you can inquire there about how to go and applying. Also, just wanted to let folks know who may be watching that the city has begun the process of taking community input on commercial cannabis in the city. And you can provide that input in a couple of ways. The city has a survey that is going to be active until, I think it's February seventh. And so you can go to haveryorsaymonterey.org. Have your say, one Monterey, all one word, dot org backslash cannabis. And you can sign up to take a survey. It only takes about five minutes. And then the city is planning a couple of online public forums on January twenty sixth and January twenty eighth, one in the morning, one in the evening. So if you have thoughts on whether or how that should happen, please make your voice heard at haveryorsaymonterey.org backslash cannabis. Thank you.
I appreciate everybody's comments. The city manager's COVID update and what Alan and many of you have mentioned tonight is the city puts out, our city staff puts out an outstanding daily COVID report which has links to CHOMP, it has links to the surveys. And I would recommend that everybody take a look at that. It's, you can get it delivered to you if you sign up with the city clerk and it's just a plethora of information on everything city and it's it talks about, well, it talked about the Kiwanis and the city's turkey meals distribution, all the things at the library. It's really very comprehensive and I want to compliment the city on putting that out. It's, it's so informative with lots of good links. And speaking of boards, I'll, I'll swap with you, Ed, after a month. So the mayor select committee of our six peninsula mayors has appointed me to be on the water district. And so I will be representing those six cities and all of the folks on the Monterey Water Management District. And I will be updating you at our council meetings. Right now I'm in a, a bit of a learning curve, learning about how the water district coordinates with Pure Water Monterey. And the finances and so on. So I definitely will be reporting to you. I suggested that that seat rotate every two years. So it's de-politicized. I don't like to see the Monterey One Water or the Water Management District boards politicized. And unfortunately, we do have that, but we want to be fact, fact based, I think. So I think I'm looking forward to that and whiskeys for drinking and waters for arguing over. So I will be getting back to you on that. And then finally, I, speaking of Zoom, I attended the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting and the Recreation Department, Karen and staff gave a fantastic presentation of of curtain status and also future challenges. And it, it was very worthwhile. So I'm pleased that our boards and commissions are still able to meet, to plan and do some of the strategic thinking then that we're engaged in. City manager reports, any final words?
Yes, but it's cut short because Councilmember Albert, as well as Councilmember Hoffer stole my thunder. Yes, tomorrow we have a webinar that deals with DoorDash and third party delivery fees. It, it's, it starts at ten o'clock and as Councilmember Hoffer said five times, haveryorsaymonterey.org, you can find the information there and the link to, to sign up for that. And then the other thunder that Councilmember Hoffer stole was the cannabis two workshops next week. Again, thank you, Councilmember Hoffer. It is on, on two days, a day session and an evening session. So far, we have received over hundred seven filled out surveys. We had over seven hundred unique visitors on that site and a one hundred forty two are actually participating on the side as active participants. So that's, that's a great start. Just barely, I would say, two weeks, three and, two and a half weeks into that adventure of haveryorsaymonterey. I close with, with a little bit of trivia, how we came up with haveryorsaymonterey. We, we were discussing what's the best title for that. And when we talked about haveryorsaymonterey, we were reminded about the old commercial that MST had in the early nineties, drive the bus, drive the bus with us. And so haveryorsay, haveryorsaymonterey sounds kind of like that. And so anyways, I thought I'd throw that trivia in since you, you council members stole all my thunder. With that, I conclude by my reports.
Can I, can I ask him to take back some thunder? Cause I have a question for him.
Absolutely. Give him some thunder.
Yeah. So I think a lot of people are curious and Alan had mentioned it in some of his long range thinking, could you announce when you think that the agenda on sea level rise will come to the city council? So we can invite those to participate because I know there's a wide range of people that are interested. So I'm giving, I'm giving it to you, Hans, to announce when you think it will come.
Okay.
Then, then another thing I'd like to ask.
So I don't think, did he give us a date?
No, he said he'd get back to you.
Oh, okay. Do, do you have any anticipation of when?
Hans, would you like me to help?
Yes, please Kim, help me out.
Sure. On February second, we will have a presentation on a transportation adaptation plan in response to sea level rise.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Me that earlier, Councilmember Smith, and I gave you the date, so I apologize. I, I just didn't translate it right.
I, I was just, I was just trying to set you up to get more thunder.
Thank you.
When, when you do a website such as Have Your Way or a link, is, is there a way to keep track of, because obviously it's not scientific. So and something like cannabis, for example, you might get a lot of folks who are interested in opening a dispensary and they're going to fill it out differently than say someone who's opposed or someone who's neutral or someone who wants information. So when you report back, well, you'll be able to not reveal people's names. I'm not saying that, but provide an understanding of, is it weighted? Is, is how representative is it of the entire city?
Yes, our, our sign up allows us to really distinguish between residents, non-residents. And the sign up also allows us to give you some ideas, what, what my people think here on this side of the tunnel and what the other people on your side of the tunnel are thinking. So we, we, we can differentiate between a certain geocod neighborhood groups as well.
Right. And then also you're going to have in people in the industry, I, I would think.
Oh, yes.
Who are going to very much want to overload that web link and website. So we just have to be careful.
And, and also I believe a week from now, we will be sending out a paper survey as well to every single household to allow folks who are not dialed in to respond to eight questions that are also reflective of the questions we have on our website.
Oh, good to know. We appreciate that because I know the council has asked for more outreach and, and you and your staff for doing that. We appreciate it. Well, with that being said, we'll adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.